Welcome. Welcome to the Monday, January 5th Joint Work Session with the City Council and Planning Commission. Happy New Year to everyone. We're delighted you're all here with us this evening. We do have a full agenda, so we ought to get started. This is a work session, so the folks in the gallery can obviously listen to the proceedings, but it'll be open really just to the folks at the table for discussion. At the end of tonight's meeting, we do have a closed session, which means that will not be open to the public at all. But we have a number of items on the agenda before we get there. So with that, before we do get started, I'd also like to mention for everyone's benefit, there is a benefit concert for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society with Nicola Pasalov.
Pasalov.
Pasalov, okay, that you all are welcome to on Friday, January 30th at 7:00 PM. It's for a good cause, and I think will be a great performance, for those of you who can pronounce the name of the gentleman who's playing. But with that, why don't we go ahead and get started? Again, we do have a busy agenda, but let's get started with the library expansion study. Who is going to be handling that, Cindy?
Let me just do a quick intro, and then we're going to help turn it over to the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to confirm for Council and the public, I know you've -- Council got an email, but Mr. Shields is out sick this evening, and so we wish him well at home recovering, and I'm glad to step in. We are going to modify the agenda in one way and change the order. So item number three, which is standard development conditions, I'd request we move to three and then take budget guidance, number two to three, and just switch the order. So standard conditions become two and budget guidance become three, and that will allow us to allow at least one staff member to head out this evening. And then following the library expansion study, I'd like to do a quick process update on the CIP as a follow-up from our November joint session. Since I'll be staying down here and unable to go to the Planning Commission, it would just give me a nice opportunity to update both bodies real briefly. With that, we do have as part of this joint session a follow-up on the library expansion renovation project as a follow-up to last year's adopted CIP. Council requested additional work, and we are here tonight to hear about the addendum and the consultants' work. So we do have the Chair of the Library Board at the table, as well as one of the consultants, Mary McMahon, the Director in the Audience, the other consultant Pam, and I believe I see the majority of all of the Library Board of Trustees have joined you as well. So with that, Brad, if I could turn it over to you to kick off the meeting, you have the overview memo in the packet, as well as the additional study document.
Thanks. Just to refresh your memory, we came before you some time ago with a quote "optimal" plan unquote, i.e. what the library would be in an ideal world. Of course, the cost was not ideal or optimal, and so you asked us to go back and study, what could we accomplish with $8 million? As it turns out, we can accomplish surprisingly substantial things with $8 million, and we were pleased by the results. So David here and Pamela right there will present what the findings are to you. But again, I'd like to frame this in a positive way, because it turns out that $8 million can buy quite a bit more than you might think it could. It allowed us to address all of the inefficiencies of the existing building, and there are many of those, from horrible plumbing, tiny bathrooms, why have you, and in addition to that, put in a build-in addition off the side of the building to give us quite a few years additional lifespan for the building. So I'll turn it over to you now. No further ado.
Okay, thank you.
And Mary, if I could ask for the lights for that slide. Thank you.
All right. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. I'm David Moore. I'm a library architect. I have been working with you and the Library Board for, I don't know what, two years now, maybe. Pamela Gillan, raise your hand Pamela, is an architect whose firm is actually located here in the city and has been a tremendous resource to our team and, I think, to you and the Library Board, and has offered great insight into the development of the project. As Brad mentioned, and as you know, that the previous study that we completed earlier answered the question to make recommendations on what the library's needs would be to meet 20-year projected needs, growth, and to be a 21st century library looking out into the future. And in the recommendations of that report, we gave the city a strategy on how that site could maximize parking, could maximize library space, and maximize future expansion. The amendment, as you've heard, is answering a different question. It's answering a question on that says, how can we maximize the library's potential with the limits of a CIP limit of $8 million for the library project in its entirety? And so we began with that, let's go to the next slide, by, we took the eight, we started with the $8 million target and asked ourselves, okay, well, when we back out soft costs, when we back out fees and furniture and owner's expenses and city expenses, how much is actually left for the bricks and mortar, for the construction? And we targeted a number. We estimated a number based on our experience, and we said, all right, so that number would equate to how many square feet? And we felt like that number needed to be between 6,000 to 7,000 square feet of addition to allow money to still be there to renovate the building and then cover all those soft costs. And so in conversations with the board, we were shooting for a target of somewhere between 6,000 to 7,000 square feet. I think we aimed a little higher, and the concept that you're going to see tonight was somewhere in the 7,600 square foot range. So the image that you see on the board now, the upper image, shows a potential 7,600 square foot addition to the west side of the building, which is the open area on the corner of North Virginia Avenue and Park Avenue. And then the scheme below that shows the same square footage being added to the building on the east side of the library, which is where the current angled parking is. The other thing that you'll notice on both of those schemes is that we were asked, as a separate exercise by the city, to evaluate and determine the cost potential for a single level parking deck, which I'll talk about in more detail in just a moment. So we'll go to the next slide. So in order to sort of vet out this idea of a 7,000 plus or minus square foot addition and test it to see what it would provide by way of programmatic elements for the library and how might it address some of those library inefficiencies that Brad mentioned, we did a couple of studies. So this study is showing what a west addition might look like, and I say this as a caveat, that these schemes that we're showing you, these are not fully designed with full client and owner input, because we're really not in the design process. We're really just trying to test the programmatic fit of the building to see what would fit and what configuration it might look like. So you'll see that in this scheme, as well as the next scheme, that we were proposing that the entry to the library be reconfigured so that it's off of Park Avenue and addresses the more civic street and also has a civic presence toward the park and the City Hall property. And you'll see that in both schemes as a consistent gesture we think would be an improvement. You'll see also that, and I'll use the pointer up here, there are several things. There's new amenities, vertical circulation, elevators, toilets that meet ADA requirements. You'll see that there's a new community meeting room for children's story hour and summer programs and library programming. There's an expanded children's area and consolidated services area, which make the library much more functional and more efficient to operate from a staffing standpoint. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the lower level to this scheme where we've consolidated the adult collections. We've been able to expand the Virginia Room and add much more adult seating and actually locate it in a place where you'll pick up daylight and views to the exterior. And then the next scheme shows you, or this, excuse me, this is the rendering, let's go back, that's a rendering of what that western addition may look like. We need to go one forward now, right there. So here you can see that the entry is facing Park Avenue. This is Park. There's the adjacent office, and this would be where the addition might grow to the west side. And you'll see that the intent with these renderings is to demonstrate and articulate what the exterior fit and finish of the building would be. So we're assuming that it would be a continuation of the scale and the massing of the library. It would be a continuation of the slate roof details. It would have the same reddish brick veneer with a Flemish bond pattern and the same kind of windows with muttons. So that really the intent in each of these schemes is that the addition would look seamless and in the end not be apparent that it was literally an addition at all. And I think that's what would make it a successful addition if it doesn't look like an addition. So that's one option of what that may look like. Now, moving forward, the eastern expansion, this shows how the library could be expanded over where the angled parking is. You'll see the same programmatic elements inside this scheme as you did the other scheme. The next slide shows the lower level, again, a consolidated adult collection, expanded Virginia Room, as well as seating expanded. And then this is a view of what that addition might look like as it grows out over the current angled parking. Again, the same aesthetic elements to tie it together and also the same recreating that sort of three arch entry portico, so that it still has that look and feel of the neighborhood community library that it currently is. The other thing that the report has, next slide, shows some pros and cons. We did a cursory overview of what those benefits of each of those schemes would be. As you can imagine, the west scheme where you grow out toward North of Virginia Avenue, the advantage is there primarily is that the library would be able to maintain the angled parking for some period of time. You would also be able to maintain a drive-through book drop if we reverse the direction of the traffic. And it also allowed us to maximize and leverage the location of many of the internal programmatic elements, so we didn't have to tear something out and then rebuild it 20 feet over. So it allowed us more efficiencies in the way, at least that scheme allowed some more efficiencies in how the existing building was utilized. The eastern addition, I think the primary pro and what many on the board found appealing is that it maintained that sort of natural green space with the trees between the current library and the North Virginia Avenue, but it does eliminate the ability to have that angled parking. Okay, so the next scheme then is we then were asked to provide a phasing strategy that would allow the library a strategy for staying in operation and in place during the renovation and construction of the additions. This obviously would save a lot of money in not having to find a temporary location to relocate the library for a year or two. And so this schedule outlines that, and the red dashed line shows a potential construction start date in the spring of 2018. And so this became a schedule that we used as a basis for our cost estimates, which were also part of the scope of the report. All right, so the next slide. So we gave those schemes and we gave that schedule to a cost estimator, and he estimated the total construction cost for not only the addition, but the renovations of the existing building to address all of the deficiencies that we discussed in the initial report at somewhere, I can't barely read that, I think $5.8 million. So the next slide, we then take that $5.8 million, we plug that into the pro forma, and then we begin to add up all the soft costs that I mentioned earlier. So you add in contingencies, you add in furniture, shelving, FFNE is what we call fixtures, furnishings, and equipment. You began, we added in some estimated professional fees, and we also estimated the potential owner cost for the project. And so in the end, that came to about $8.3 million, was slightly over the $8 million target. And so the analysis in the red letters and numbers show that if we were to reduce the square footage of that addition from 7,600 square feet to 6,300 square feet, it would be at $7.9 million. So really, adjustment in the footprint size without losing any of those programmatic elements would allow that to fall right in the $8 million target budget. So we feel like in either scheme, the west or the east, is going to offer the library vast improvements programmatically to some of the deficiencies that the library has. It's going to allow you as a community to make better use of that building. The other thing I'll point out is that in the first scheme, the 20-year projected needs showed a reduction in the collection shelving size because of the anticipation of collections moving to a more digital and downloading and streaming strategies, which will probably happen over the next 20 years. The schemes that we've shown here today do not decrease any of the collection size at all. In fact, we've actually increased some of the collection shelving, so that in the short term, there would be no reduction in the amount of collection shelving space. Okay, next slide. We also were asked, as I mentioned, to address the parking deck. This image on the left shows the upper level with an entrance off of Park Avenue, the existing library over here, that's the curve is the bay window in the children's area, and this is the neighboring office building. I will point out that the width of this garage is drawn at the minimums, so it can't get narrower, and it is also aligned on the very edge of that common property line between the library and the office building. And so this scheme works so that you can enter in off Park Avenue on the upper level, and you can enter the lower level from the parking lot behind the office building. We go to the next slide. And the upper left-hand image shows what that one level deck might look like. So you would have that entrance off of Park Avenue, you would have potential stair on the back corner of that garage potentially, and you can see how the lower level is accessed by the parking back here, for a total of about 109 parking spaces. We were also asked to address how that parking deck might provide for future vertical expansion. And so if the deck were to be expanded with level floor plates, as indicated down here, we could take the angled parking adjacent to the library and actually build a ramping system that would allow you to drive up each ramp, circulate around, and then drive back down. But obviously, that takes up part of that library property where the east addition could potentially go. The other option would be to design the deck so that it's capable of adding ramp levels, so you don't need that ramping system. And in doing that, you can see the numbers that as you go up, you can obviously increase the amount of spaces. So the image on the lower left-hand corner would give you about 159, 160 spaces. The design of the parking deck on the right would give you about 189, 190 spaces. And it's not to say that those decks couldn't even get higher, but I think there's probably a limit to how high you would want to take that before the facade of the deck began to feel a little out of scale for Park Avenue. So you do have that potential. Next slide, we did the same exercise with the library. We provided the concept drawings to an estimator who estimated that that single level deck with entrance on both levels at about $2.8 million. Next slide, we plugged that into the pro forma there at the top and then added in fees, estimated fees, estimated owner's administrative costs. I'll also point out that we put in a construction contingency. We also put in estimated contingency to allow for the amount of time between today, when we estimated it, versus a year or two when it may be built. So with those contingencies built in there, the cost is landing at about $3.4 million. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and open up for any questions.
Thank you very much. That was a quite thorough presentation. We appreciate it. Should we start maybe with the Library Board? Do you all have any comments that you'd like to give to us before we begin our discussion?
No, only to say that it was probably surprising to us how much we can accomplish for the $8 million. We went into it not having any idea, and we're fairly comfortable with what it would buy us.
Did you come to conclusions about the preference between, for example, the east or west expansion, parking lot options?
We did not. It sort of depends on local preferences, I guess. David has been clear that the west addition would be better from a programmatic perspective because of the way it allows us to use the existing building without having to take out lots of stuff from inside it and rearrange it. So from a logical perspective and a programmatic perspective, it makes more sense, but we haven't endorsed it per se yet.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for all the work that you guys have done. We know you've spent quite a good amount of time thinking this through and mulling this through, so we appreciate that. Why don't we go ahead and get started with just some discussion from Planning Commission and the City Council, maybe starting with the Planning Commission, of questions or comments that you might have for purposes of discussion. Ruth, you want to maybe get started with your folks on your side of the table?
Why don't we start down here with Bafa?
Okay. Just have a couple of questions. I was thinking about the deck that you mentioned, and I was wondering, how are we financing that project? I mean, the --
The parking deck?
Yeah.
Would you like me to take that one?
Sure. I imagine it's bonding, but go ahead, Cindy.
That project would be put in the proposed CIP that will shortly be coming before the Planning Commission, and I'm still working on the financing of it. That wasn't part of the consultant study. So there's definitely, given its size, it would be debt financed, and so then the question is, could water sale proceeds or some other resource be put towards it? Also, because this could be a public parking deck partnership, if it goes larger than one deck, there might be some private business partnership we might explore if we went for multiple decks, given the shortage of parking in the commercial and medical office area nearby.
So we're planning for this deck to be a dual-use or multipurpose use deck?
For sure, we have to replace the parking for 313 Park Avenue, because we'd be building the deck on their air rights and then additional for the library, and then depending on the size, even more public. Their top deck gets 55 additional spots, and so there will be peak times where the library might need all of that, but at other times not. So it would be open to the public theoretically.
And just one last comment. I think both plans that we saw tonight are really very sensible plans, and I do like both of them. The west expansion is the one that I obviously favor, because I think architecturally, it looks really good. And it does, I think, when you look at it from the rendering that you provided, it's a, I find it to be really very, you know, very comfortable. It fits on the site much, much better than the other piece of it on the backside, the other expansion. So really, I mean, I think those are two very sensible plans. Either one should be fine, but my preference would be the west, the west expansion. Thank you.
Wendy?
Sorry.
Okay, I'll share. How cooperative or how willing is 313 willing to work with us?
I've had discussions with the president of the condo association, as well as the owners of the air rights, and they're both willing to --
With Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Yeah.
Both willing to entertain a partnership.
I think there's a lot of possibilities.
I thought both the plans were really nice, but I do think the west has the advantage of having that natural light, which looks like you can't, you can't get that natural light on the east side, because it's deeper. And there's also a nice environmental boost by having some natural light, so you don't have to use as much light during the daylight in terms of electricity and things like that. But I just think that with the parking deck on 313, it's going to be very complicated. So another reason to go with the west is it keeps the parking you do have on the back. And, because you just don't know how long this kind of partnership would take to get together, and we don't have clear financing at this point. So it seems to me the west addition is the smarter way to go, because you keep the parking you have. And I think the entrance on Park is a great idea. It's a really nice, most of the time that I go to the library, I've almost always been coming through the park. So it really does kind of front where a lot of people look at the, look at the library. And it seems to me it'll be a better entrance for those people that have some accessibility issues. And so it's a very nice plan. Thank you.
Ruth? I just have a few things to clarify. The parking as proposed is just one thing, would be you'd have to go to the library if you parked there? You couldn't go to Cherry Hill or Starbucks?
No, right now, I would propose it's a public parking if we are doing public investment. So depending on council policy, it would allow it to be a public lot, and you could use any of the adjacent.
Okay. And so the owners of the land are willing, is there, would there be a cost that's not captured in this ongoing or one-time? Because that was just construction cost, right?
I've only had preliminary discussions with them on that. They would, of course, need parking during construction, so they wouldn't want to lose parking for their business tenants during that. And they have expressed some interest in some small financial offset for the use of the land.
Okay.
But it's minimal in comparison to what land acquisition cost would be.
Sure. As far as the actual design, I think the west expansion makes a lot of sense for all the reasons mentioned. If you did go to the east, it'd be interesting to actually make that strip of green on the west, some sort of outdoor seating or patio or something like that, versus just some grass and a tree. I know this seems silly, but having a drive-up post office box is a big selling point to me. I mean, it's amazing we don't have the infester. I love that entrance there. I think we'd have to look at a mid-block crosswalk and a way to make that safe, because I think people coming from Cherry Hill going down to Virginia and then crossing coming back, that's already not a great crossing, because it kind of comes into the point, which isn't anywhere near where you're actually trying to go. So that's worth thinking about. I, overall, I think it's great. I will say, if I recall, when we did the CIP, you guys came with a big ask, and we debated, and there was a lower number before in the $6 million range, and then in one of the plans, there was some parking that would be a couple million bucks. I thought the $8 million that we kind of threw out there last year included parking. So now to see this plan where it's $8 million to get the building and then another $3 million for parking, in my mind, is an $11 million library expansion. Now, if it's public parking, there's some other benefits there to consider, but I will say from what I thought we talked about last year, I was a little surprised to see the $8 million going to just the building and no parking included with that. But that's all I got. Also, you said 7,600, but all the paperwork says 6,600, so I'm not sure how many square foot on that addition for the three point, or the 8.3 million is, but.
Yeah, I may, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, you had to adjust it down.
Yeah, I think I meant to say 6,600.
Sure. Okay.
That's all.
I just want to say that last year, when we sent you packing with a much lower figure, we were all, most of the Planning Commission was feeling very badly, because we really want you to have an addition to this library. But I think that the consultants have done a terrific job in giving you so much potential here, and I think that $8 million for the building and then an additional $3 million, if that's what it is, I don't know, for parking is a bargain. So I'm very encouraged that we're actually going to get something out of this proposal. Thank you. Bafa?
I don't want to be a spoiler after giving you this, really, my speech about this being a sensible plan, but I wanted to bring up a what-if. Given that this is a schematic design, and you're giving us a cost that is supposed to be equal on both sides, if we start digging, or if we start designing, for example, and we come across some really big technical difficulties, what then? I mean, when you're going through the actual construction document phase, when you have a geotech analysis and all that, that's telling you, okay, you can't expand on the west side. What then? What do we do?
That's a great question. If we were to go back to the overall budget, I will say that the construction cost from the estimator, the 5.8, if that's what it was, actually includes a design contingency, and it's actually a design contingency to an escalation point. So what that means is that there is a contingency built into that number to account for the fact that we're estimating it, or estimated it in the end of 2014, but it might not be constructed till '18. So there's a lot of unknown in the next four years that might happen, the construction cost. So there's a little buffer in there for that. The other thing that you'll see in that pro forma, just below that number on the third line, I think line C, is that there's a construction contingency on top of that one. And that construction contingency would more readily speak to the circumstance you just suggested. So you start digging, all of a sudden you find unsuitable soil, you find rock, you find some utility line that's not on the survey. That 10% construction contingency on line C is a pot of money that you would have there for unforeseen conditions. And so that's sort of what you would want to, at a minimum, hold at least 10% for those kinds of things, especially in a renovation. The good news with this library is that the fact that it was renovated in the 80s is maybe less likely to find major surprises within the architecture when you start taking ceilings and walls out. If it was a 100-year-old building that had not been touched 100 years, there's probably a more likely chance that you're going to discover a lot of unusual situations. We think that because the building was renovated in the 80s, that there'll be less likely, less opportunity for that to happen here.
I think, I think my question really was, I guess my concern was more about site conditions rather than building conditions themselves. Let's see, if technical issues such as structural issues, et cetera, were to come into the equation, I mean, what do we do then with regard to, okay, do we go back to east? Do we go back to the east side, because the east side looks like it's going to be more or less costly? Or do we go, you know, that kind of uncertainty?
I think my response to that would be that at the time that if this moves forward and the money's approved and you hire a design team, at that point in time, I think that design team is going to do a next, another round of due diligence on the east side versus the west side. There'll be geotechnical tests and borings and all those things to sort of vet out those unknown conditions. You don't want to get down to the point where you're digging in the ground and then feel like you've got to redesign it. So you're going to do due diligence in that design phase to answer those questions.
So we do have a plan?
And I think that plan's part of that normal design process, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, why don't we move to our side of the table? Mr. Duncan, any comments, questions? I know you've been in a number of these meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary or Chad or somebody in the room can answer this quickly, I think. When did we actually do the last renovation? When did we cut the cake to open it?
1992.
That's what I thought. Thank you, Mary. I appreciate your long and hard work on this, including your willingness to sit and listen to me a year and a half ago, offer my thoughts about it and your, you know, public input phase of the process. Everything that we do here, I try to bring a priority of doing real and lasting good. It's especially true of our marquee civic buildings. For me, lasting good has a number that, that has a two in front of it. You know, it's 20, 25, ideally 30. It's a generational kind of effort that I would like to, you know, support. Tony Jones is here in the room tonight and can probably remember the number of times that I asked her, how, how long is that Mount Daniel renovation going to be good for, Tony? And until I was pretty confident that it was going to be a 20-year-plus building, I was not very enthusiastic about going to the citizenry to ask for their support for it. So I bring that attitude about this project. I'm underwhelmed by what we can get for eight million dollars, and, and that is absolutely no reflection on your extremely hard effort and sharp pencil work. It's more a reflection on how difficult it is to accomplish real and lasting good with an eight million dollar investment. I would like to see us aim for something that does incorporate, as you say in your two-page efficiency's, that the raise and rebuild option would have been able to accomplish. I'm not really sure that I would say that this is a vast improvement over what we have now. I think it is an improvement, obviously. But I start this discussion, and I hope it is just the beginning of the discussion that we will have, although we do need to conclude it within this cycle. I feel strongly about that, thinking that we have four options. One is to do nothing, or essentially nothing. There, I think, are a number of people in the community who are skeptical that there is a library of the future that looks anything like we believe it will today. Certainly increasing shelf space, those folks would say is, is just, it just doesn't make any sense. You know, books are going electronic. Another option is the eight million dollar one-side option. You know, it has its strengths. It has weaknesses, I think. The third option is do a raise and rebuild and build a proper facility that will last 30, 40, maybe even 50 years. The fourth option is to do a, fill in the blank million, and I don't know what the number is, renovation and interior improvements and, and expansion that would go both to the east and the west and to the Park Avenue side. I would ask if we could sharpen your pencils and give us information on the cost of an east and west and west renovation. Because I think if that number is reasonable, and I'm not exactly sure what reasonable is, but at today's current interest rates, the difference between, you know, bonding eight million and 10, 11 million is, is just not that much if we're talking about a building that's going to last for a generation. I believe it's, you know, along the order of a penny on the tax rate to do what I hope would be, if you went both ways, east and west, would be a facility that we could with confidence say would last for 20 years and would be designed in a way that the two major constituencies that I think we're trying to answer to here, that's parents with young kids, because that's a huge draw for the library, and, and people who are my kids' age, and they're not kids anymore, they're 20, 21, 22, 24. When you ask them, what is a library? They talk about it as a collaborative space. It's got a coffee shop. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a social as well as a, a working kind of environment. It's got some, I don't know how to put it any other way. It's got some grandeur to it. It's not sort of cramped and crowded. I would, I would hope that maybe the east and west option would give us the ability to, to see a library that we'd be able to use, you know, 20, 25, 30 years down the road. Just in closing, I would ask that if we could get information on that option, I would really like for the library board to, to weigh in about what exactly they think should be done, because I, I think we're going, we're going to need to go to referendum on this. And, and I would expect the library to be at the library board, to be at the very forefront of the campaign to convince the community that we need to spend whatever amount of money it is, eight million, 10 million, 11 million. And, and I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to swing in behind that. And I want to make clear that I'm, I'm strongly in support of doing right by the library. Finally, just briefly, the parking option that I would prefer to see would be the, the two-deck that would give us some benefits for the shopping area across the way, because that's really a chronically underparked area. And I think, again, for a fairly modest additional investment, we can get a whole lot more bang for our buck if we go with a, a larger parking deck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Ms. Oliver, I think you're the liaison for the library board, aren't you?
Yep. And I'm really pleased to see so many members of the library board here tonight. They've put a lot of really hard work into this process, and I'm glad they were able to be here for this discussion so they could hear the feedback as well. I, I'm obviously familiar with this, and I've had more opportunity to get my questions answered. I think one important point to make is that of the eight million, as I understand it, about four million is what you need to do for the renovations. So once you make the first change to this building, you have to spend the four million to get the renovations that you need in place and to bring this up to the ADA standards. And it's, doing nothing is going to probably cost more because we would be trying to do renovations in a building where we don't always have the space that we need to do them. So it could be quite expensive to do nothing if, as you will. So given that four half of the money goes towards those needed renovations, and as a city, I don't think we want to be known as a city where the family gets stuck in the elevator for three days, or the, or, you know, and, and as a city, I think that we are committed to supporting the American with Disabilities Act, and we would like to be in compliance in our public facilities and, and not just able to say we're, we're not touching it so we don't have to come up to current standards. So I think that this is a really, really needed renovation. And my only thought is that, given the limits of how far we can go on the east or the west, I'd like to maximize the space. I don't think there's any real benefit to saving $400,000 and having less space just to keep under an artificial eight million dollar number.
Great, thank you. Ms. Connolly?
Thank you all for this plan. The library was the very first place that I ever loved in Falls Church. Spent many hours there with my small children. So as I looked at this plan, I just, my questions are mostly about the construction costs. And I know these are estimates, and when it, what, for, my first question is, what would be the next step after this? If we say, yes, we like this and we want to do the west addition, what happens next?
Well, typically, what would happen is that the city would move forward with an RFP for either a more in-depth feasibility study that would maybe go through a more elaborate design process, or you would, the city could just put on RFP for architectural and engineering design services. That contract could take many different forms, but essentially the next step would be to do a preliminary design that would go into much more detail and much more interaction between the library staff, the library board, and the design team. And, and you would do a more thorough set of drawings, not these little conceptual drawings. And then you would do an updated estimate based on, you know, the more information on the drawings, the more accurate the estimate is. And that's really the next step.
Okay. And who would manage that process? Would city staff manage or the consultant?
That would be city staff, and we could do several approaches. But the library board staff, the director, could oversee the procurement and the design. But at that point, we'd also be partnering with Public Works and bringing in our facility staff to help manage the project.
So would there be a construct, an outside construction manager, or it would just all be staff run?
At this point, it would sort of depend on the timing. But we do have a construction management supervisor now and inspections. But before we get to the actual construction, we need to do the A and E, do 30%, so we can get a truer cost estimate, and then move into the next stage. But generally, at this point, with the staff that the council has approved for CIP and construction management, we try to manage it in-house. No matter what, you have to have staff overseeing it because the, you need the owner rep looking out for what we need. And then you, we'd be consulting contractors for A and E and then construction.
Okay.
And I would also add that during that phase, that's when you would vet out more information on the site. You'd, you'd get an updated survey. You would do the geotechnical testing. You would get all that information. And I think at that point in time, you'd really begin to look at the cost implications and functional implications of the east versus west in more detail, because we just didn't really have the time or the scope within this study to vet out both solutions.
Right. And that would happen soon, so that it could be a referendum in November? Is that the-
Well, part of it, part of it is we're about to embark into the CIP process. So this input is very helpful. We'll have the community input. If it gets adopted in the next CIP, and depending on what year, then we could target the November election for the referendum. That, depending on how much detail you want for that referendum, that could be a tight timeline. If we go with a broad concept now and the option of east or west, depending on engineering, November would be very easy. If we need to do full procurement and get to 30% designs before council wanted to issue authorization for a referendum, November's probably not realistic.
And then it would have to be the following November?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it does have to be a general election.
Okay. So then I just have some questions about the cost. As I was looking at your cost, you had on page 54, $333 per square foot. That included the construction cost and the soft cost. So I started thinking about some other projects that we've done in the city in the last five years to see what those square foot costs were. And our most recent one, we had a $15 million bond on Mount Daniel. We're getting 66,000 square feet, so that's $227 a square foot. The TJ new part was for a $5 million, $5 million construction. We had 22,000 new square feet, and that's $227 a square foot. For the TJ renovation, it was $4 million for a 37,000 square foot renovation, which is $128 a square foot. So this one comes out at $333 a square foot. And I'm just wondering, what is the difference? And how can that be a good deal?
That's a great question. And you said you were looking at page 50-
I'm looking at page 54, where you have your statement of probable cost.
54, perfect. So, no, that's a great question. The distinction you'll see on page, for those who have page 54, you'll see it, the, the first line says total library project cost, 333.
Right.
So that is if, can we go to the, the budget pro forma again? That is if you take the construction cost and the furniture cost and the fees and all of the city costs, the total project cost and divided by the square foot. The number right below that where it says the construction cost at 234 would be the contract cost. That's the cost that you'd be paying for the bricks and mortar. That'd be the contract amount that you would sign with the contractor, which is in line with the projects that you mentioned. So there's two ways of looking at it. You're looking at either the construction cost per square foot or the project cost per square foot. And that's why those two numbers are different for the same project.
Right. I understand that. But I think that some of those school costs actually included the professional compensation.
I, I don't know.
Yeah. But I think because we just approved a, oh, look at Dr. Jones is not me. Yeah. So some of those costs, oh, the furniture's not included in those bonded amounts, but everything else is.
Right. So furniture, you know, that does, and the other thing I would mention is that the larger the project gets, the lower that cost per square foot can, can, can come because you're spreading that cost out over order of magnitude. So there's a couple factors in the cost here. One is it's a smaller building, but you still have a contractor's mobilization. You still have all those sort of baseline expenses that you're going to have for a 200,000 square foot building, you're going to have for a small building. The other thing that makes this building more challenging is there's probably a six-month, an eight-month additional time within the construction period to deal with the phasing and the temporary walls and the temporary protections and the temporary certificate of occupancy. So there's a lot of costs associated with keeping the library in place and operational during construction. So the contractor, he has to bring out painters three or four times. He can't bring a painter in one time. Painter can get it done and leave. He has to mobilize every subcontractor three or four times throughout the process. So I think a lot of those things compounded together probably add to a higher cost per square foot.
Okay. And then my other question is, in this process, then, if we do send this out to bid and contractors are bidding on it, there is a chance that they will bid less than what the estimate is?
Oh, absolutely. You get, you get the advantage of competitive bidding. You know, the challenge is, and what we don't know, is how hungry the contractors will be-
Right.
-in 2018 or whenever this may happen. And that's sort of the unknown. So we tend to estimate conservatively because we don't want you to put money in a CIP only to find out later it wasn't enough. So, you know, and same with the parking deck. You know, we, we asked our estimator to be conservative. The other thing that's a challenge here is that you have a site where there's no contract laydown space. So there's no place for contractor to, to bring in a truckload of steel and lay it down. And so, you know, that adds to his cost. He's got to store it somewhere else. He's got to pay to transport it from the plant to the manufacturer to a temporary place, and he's got to bring it to the site. And so he, there's just a lot of cost built into building in this sort of downtown urban area, if you will, because there's, you don't have this vast area that he can just lay down all his equipment and mobilize like that. The one thing I would like to add to, to that and some early responses is I would echo some of the comments I've heard in that I, I don't think that doing nothing is an option. I will tell you, as a library architect who deals with dozens of libraries every year, I would implore you as a city not to do nothing, because the library really does have some significant efficiencies. You have them functionally, you have them from a security standpoint, you have them from a safety standpoint, you have them from an ADA standpoint. I think we outlined a lot of those in that first phase. So I would agree with the notion that not doing anything is, is not an option. The other thing I would say is that I do believe the eight million dollar renovation would provide you, the city and the community with lasting good. The notion that it's not, that it's not enough good, therefore don't do it, I would, I would disagree with a notion that might suggest that. You know, would, would we rather have the initial 18 million dollar scheme? Sure. Would we love to have the east and west side at the same time? Absolutely. But I will tell you that an eight million dollar addition to one side or the other, and, and really, I would take either side. Either side, eight million dollars to renovate that building and to add the programmatic elements that you would get in that eight million dollars would make that library, for all intents and purposes, a brand-new building. It would allow you as a community to have programming and opportunities, and allow the staff to better serve the community and provide services that you're just not getting right now, that you should be getting in the library. So I just wanted to add that to the record.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder.
Thank you very much. I'd like to echo the comments that others have made about the solid work that's been done here by the library board and, and by their various consultants. And I guess if we were doing this library project for me, I'd be pretty satisfied with it. But I really want to do a library project for future generations, not just for me. And I think Phil Duncan began to get into that a little bit when he talked about a project good for 30, 40, 50 years. So one of the options I'm going to ask we take a look at is what would be the square footage cost, and how much could we get if we bought basically a condominium interest in a new building going up somewhere around the city for not necessarily all the library purposes, but some. I'm aware that there's a memo in our package and that that idea has not been met with enthusiasm. But I think the question is going to be asked when we go to referendum, and I think we should go to referendum on this project. Did you look at all the options? What did they cost? And what were the benefits of this option versus the other options? Council member Duncan mentioned a couple, but I really want to pursue the cost and square footage that we could get. square footage that we could get if we bought an interest in, for example, the building that's moving through the approval process at West and Broad. There are some interesting synergies. They'll have businesses that could be patronized by the library. The parking would be built into the project in one way or another. So I'd like a thorough financial analysis. And again, the library that I want to design is not a library for me, but a library for people that are very, very young now and some not even born yet. So that's why I want to make sure that we're getting the absolute value that we possibly can for the future, and I'm not convinced of that yet. So I do want this other option pursued as part of our ongoing effort. If you look at the cost per square footage, I think Councilmember Conley already got into that. It seems pretty high. And I'm not really convinced that we're getting the kind of library facility that people want to patronize today. The library and the college that I went to is totally different from the library that I remember. It's wide-open spaces, large meeting areas, social gathering point. The community obviously needs community meeting space. And my question is, are we really getting that with this proposal? I'm not saying that we aren't necessarily, and a lot of work was done to try to fit into financial constraints. But I want us to take a step back and say, are we really building the library for 30, 40, 50 years hence? And is this the right way to go? So I'm not convinced that we're there yet, and I'd like some additional work done on that before we're called upon to make a final decision. Because frankly, our citizens are going to ask exactly these questions when we go to referendum. So that would be the major point that I would make tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. Mr. Z?
Thank you. The advantage of coming last is that nearly all the important points have been made. Without making them again, I do want to thank all the people that have been involved in bringing this project to this point in time. Library facility, even more so than the schools in any community, reflects the aspirations, the culture, the hopes of those people that live there, for not only for themselves, but how they invest in the citizens and the image of that community. So the library becomes something more than just a place where you go pick up some books and read a magazine and drop your kid off while you're looking for the latest CD. And so going to the question of what does this building going to look like after we pay roughly the equivalent of four and a half cents addition to the tax rate for the next 20 years? When you get to 2040, 2045, will the people that live in this city at that point in time say, wow, that's really a great building. This is the library of the future. I have to say that right now, this doesn't do it for me. And I also think that you can't have a discussion about this library without talking about the parking. You've talked about the parking, but the parking needs to be part of this. It can't be that 800-pound gorilla that just sits off on the side of the room and we ignore. You're not going to expand the library and not include the parking. So once you do that, this is no longer an $8 million project. And if you get the public-private partnership we're talking about, it's at least 12, probably more like another $5 million on top of that, 13, 14 million. So that's a true cost. And I really like the way you look at this from a total project cost perspective. The city, well, you know, could take on some of the burden, but the overall cost of this library project is huge. It's enormous. So path forward, what suggestions do I have? Well, I don't know. But I do know this, that when we ask the citizens of the city to add some more to their tax base, tax rate that they have to pay for the next 20 years, I think it would be fair for us to have a good answer for them. What does this money give them? And what's it going to look like in 23 years? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Z. I've got a couple of questions and comments. Again, as I said earlier, I think there's a lot of fine work that's been done. Let me ask you the cost per square foot. We've talked about the number. Is that a blended number? In other words, the new construction and the renovation are all blended together to come up with that 300? Was it 333? Is that the number? Is that a blended rate basically for renovation and for new construction?
Yes. The project was estimated as a project in its entirety. There was no distinction made in the estimate between here's the number going to the new versus the renovation. And in the renovation, you're bringing the building up to current codes, current energy codes, current seismic codes, current energy codes, current accessibility codes. So there's a lot of renovations within the building to make, bring the building up to where it needs to be today, and then, of course, all the new construction with it.
Ms. Oliver suggested about half of this cost was basically bringing the building up to code. Is that accurate or somewhat accurate in your opinion?
I can't remember. I remember the meeting, and I showed a spreadsheet, and we allocated. I just can't remember the number specifically. If that's a recollection, then I'm sure that's probably what we've, I just don't remember.
And so if we added?
I've got the spreadsheet on my computer. I just don't have it up.
So a little while earlier, we were talking about going from 7,000, maybe 7,700 to 6,900. Is that the number you're talking about?
Yeah. I'm sorry for the confusion there. The addition represents basically an addition over two floors for a total additional square footage, somewhere between 6,000 to 7,000 square feet. And that's what the board, the first meeting, said. We would like you to target somewhere in there. And so I just need to verify that number. But if you look at the total cost per square foot and you look at the dimensions, I think that's what that addition measures out to be.
Well, what I was getting at is it looked like their one option dropped it, the cost down by about 400,000, but you lost about 1,000 square feet of space or 800 square feet of space, which you can do the math on.
In that one, right.
I don't know what that comes out to per square foot, but that'll kind of give you a new cost per square foot, construction cost, right? And what is that number? If you do that math real quick?
Which number?
Well, you basically said if you dropped from 7,000, I can't remember the number.
Well, the difference there between the 2510 and the 238 is a 1,300, I think. I think it's a 1,300 square foot reduction. And so when you carry that all the way through, that's what gets you to 7.9. But I'll concede that the reduction in the square foots would only happen in the new construction, which has a different cost per square foot number than the renovation number does. So again, we're dealing with order of magnitude, sort of broad-brush kind of numbers, you know? And some of the questions are asking very specific numbers, so it's a little hard.
Well, what I was trying to get at is, in fact, it may be cost benefit to actually have the additional, not square feet, because you're paying kind of a fairly low price for the new construction. In other words, when you blend this out, you're paying for a lot of ADA renovation and the like. The new construction's really not what's costing a lot so much. It's a lot of renovation inside the building, maybe elevators, other things like that. And so I might suggest having a larger renovation, that extra 1,300 square feet may actually be a good idea to do.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And again, I think when the question asked about what that next process is, I think that's the kind of analysis that happens in that next phase.
Okay.
Because I think that's where you can really begin to define and identify where costs are going. Right now, again, this is very conceptual. We don't have existing drawings. We don't have geotechnical soil borings. We don't have any of that kind of information. So right now, it's a lot of very conceptual estimating essentially.
Sure. I like your idea of moving the entrance to park. I think to Andy's point, which I think was an excellent point, I wonder if moving the entrance to the corner would make sense. And I don't, you know, architecturally, I don't know how that would work, but I think it is an idea that people are going to cross to go straight to the entrance. And so I think that's something that ought to be given a little consideration. I think also, as far as city government, we need to really get a lot of community input on this. It's great that Planning Commission and City Council are being brief right now, but as part of CIP process and our town hall process, I'd certainly like to make sure that the community has ample opportunity to weigh in on the idea of what we're considering right now. But I think to Dan Z's point as well, this really is a $12 million renovation. I don't think you can separate the renovation of the library from the parking. I don't think, you're not suggesting that we could do the renovation without the parking, correct?
Well, I mean, technically, you can.
No, but?
But you probably wouldn't want to just because you have a parking problem now. And I will remind the council, and as you're aware, that in that first phase, we did an enormous amount of community engagement, online surveys, paper surveys. We had focus groups. And I will tell you that it was a resounding, one, the community loves the library. They love the staff. They think the library is meeting a lot of their needs. The staff received very high praise, probably more so than most libraries that we, when we do community meetings, we heard very high things. The community loves the library's location, for the record. That came through pretty loud and clear. And the need for parking was a resounding, if there was one criticism, that was the one we heard, that there was a desire for more parking, so.
And how many parking spaces do you feel is adequate for this library?
I think we had that number in the first report. But I don't recall it off the top of my head, so I don't want to say and contradict my report. But I think there's a number in there. I just can't remember what it is. Do you remember?
Unfortunately, I don't remember the number. I do know that we also had a much larger meeting space.
That's true. I have to look at it and let you know.
So the parking in the garage, is it 54, 55 spaces per floor?
Essentially. 54 on one, 55 on the other. And that essentially mirrors what's on the surface now. So the idea is that the surface spaces essentially stay the same, but you double what's on the surface now by adding that extra level.
And so how many levels of parking are you proposing to meet the library's needs? Not necessarily the shopping center and other places like that?
Well, we were asked to, the scope of work, we were asked to price and estimate a one-level deck. So we weren't asked to design a parking deck that would meet the ultimate library's parking needs in this study. We were asked to estimate what a one-level deck would cost. And so that's what we drew and estimated.
So you're not sure whether the one-level deck is adequate, then?
It's, the answer's not that simple, only because you have off-street parking, you have surrounding parking opportunities for a library. And so urban libraries have a different parking requirement than a suburban library was. If you can imagine a suburban library where if you don't park in that lot, there's nowhere to park. So here, you don't have to have every single library space provided for because you do have off-street parking, and it's a walking community, and you can park two or three blocks away and still get there pretty comfortably. So I would say that 50 spaces would not be the total need for the library, but I don't know that the total need for the library would have to be on that deck.
Okay. And the $3.4 million number that I seem to recall for the deck, how many levels is that by?
That's just the one level. So what that does is that essentially removes that surface parking, digs into the hill, builds the retaining walls, adds the one level, adds the wall, adds brick detailing, adds signage, adds lighting, adds the stair to get you down off that deck. So it gets you basically that one level.
But is that about, am I doing my math right? Is that about $75,000 a parking space for new parking? Because we already got the surface there right now.
Yeah. The surfing comes away, so you're rebuilding the surface parking.
Yeah.
So you're really buying 109 spaces.
But we've already got 54 of them. So we're, at the end result, we're getting 55 new spaces, and we're paying about $3.4 million for 55 new parking spaces.
Yeah.
So is that about right, though? Is that what I'm saying, is about 75 grand per structured parking space?
If that's how it divides out, then yes.
Okay. I think that's something that probably needs a little more discussion and attention. It seems to me to be a pretty pricey endeavor for parking spaces.
Yeah.
I mean, even underground spaces seem like they'd be cheaper than.
We've got it 7608. And again, you know, that's what the professional estimator has said that it would cost. You know, there's no laydown space. It could be a couple of years out. There's some contingencies in there. There's the same design contingency with escalation. There's the same construction contingency, so yeah. And there's also upgrades. We also had him increase the cost for the foundations for potential future floors. And so there's added structural costs that you might not see if it was going to be simply a one-level deck and only a one-level deck. But you know, you're building a foundation for a four or five-level deck, so there's extra concrete and steel and work. So, you know, there's all those issues there. And again, you're dealing with a just-in-time delivery on parts and pieces because there's no laydown space.
Sure.
I mean, so it's not an inexpensive endeavor, that's for sure.
Sure. I'd say to me, that's something that might bear a little bit more thought of how we can, might possibly do it a little more economically, or there are other options. We're going to spend that kind of money, even underground things where we don't have, you know, a structured parking lot there. I think that's about all I've got for my questions. Unless anyone has anything else, I'd, again, like to thank, I think you guys have done some great work. It's pretty exciting to see the results of, you know, this many months of, or probably years, of analysis and discussion. And I think there's more to come. But I'd like to thank everyone involved, the library board, you all especially, for the great work you've done. Unless there's any more questions, I guess we'd thank you again and appreciate all your time. So thanks again.
You're welcome.
And Mayor, as I mentioned earlier, as we shift off of this library-specific, if I can just do an update on the CIP before we end the joint session and maneuver people around. What I'm handing out is a copy of the Planning Commission Development Process that I've been working with the, do we need more? Working with the current chair of the Planning Commission on. And this was a direct follow-up to the Joint Council School Board and Planning Commission Works Session and the comments we heard about the community engagement process. So this is a document of a revised timeline. And I wanted to brief Council and Planning Commission on it, give the Planning Commission some time to confirm this, and then we'll update the budget schedule that's posted on the website. But this would call for some more community engagement. Some of the highlights would be in timeline shift. The January 20th presentation to the Planning Commission will not be a fully baked CIP, but rather a broad outline where I can come and ask some key prioritization policy, get some direction from the Planning Commission, incorporating things like we heard today and other thoughts. Then on February 2nd, I would do the normal full presentation of the CIP and start the formal deliberative process. And then we've delayed the adoption by the Planning Commission of the CIP to February 23rd. So the formal process shifts by a week, a formal meeting time to allow for some more dialogue. We've also added a February 8th, which is a Sunday if Planning Commission concurs, for a town hall engagement process on the CIP. Not just a stand-up and talk for three minutes, but a good engagement presentation on the projects and to ask for prioritization and input. That was another reason to do that on a Sunday and to shift presentation and then also shift the adoption. I'm working with Communications to build a more robust website that lists all current projects, completed projects, current projects, and proposed projects, so you can go look at details, look at scope, look at it mapped to see where it is in the city. And I'm in the final stages of an online survey that would ask basically five questions and provide some description of what is a CIP, so folks would have some context to answer. But we provide them some projects and ask them to rank them and the importance so we can get a sense of general government facilities or school facilities or transit or parks. Then we'd also ask them, do you want sort of a financing question? For local tax funding, what's most important to you? Get all these projects in five years? Get them in five to 10 years? 10 years or more? And it's worded so they would know that you'd pay more upfront if you want it quicker than later. To kind of get a sense of what type of projects, what kind of financing and funding are people willing to pay? A general comments box that they could add anything that they wish to provide, and then some demographic data so we can have a sense of people who are responding, live or work here, how long they've lived or worked here, and do they have kids in school? So we can kind of tie that to the prioritization. We hope to issue that this Friday and have it out on the street till about January 23rd so I have time to analyze the data and get it back in time for it to be part of the information for the town hall open house meeting. And so, that is a real quick highlight of what we've been working on that's spelled out in more detail here. And if I could ask the current Planning Commission Chair if you have anything you want to add to what we've been working on?
No, we've talked out all the, the dates, and it works with our schedule. And I hope, I hope that it goes with your approval, that it gets your approval, because we've spread it out so that it still fits in with your budgeting process. But it gives us more time to discuss and get community feedback. I mean, we, we think that's really important. We've been hearing a lot from people, not only I, but other people, school board people, and, and they've all been saying that they want more input into the CIP process. So, we're, we're trying to give them that, and we hope it meets with your approval.
Yeah, and I did forget one thing I wanted to highlight, that this Friday, June 9th, at 9:30, we're going to be meeting with the businesses in the Crossroads Business District, which is sort of the downtown part of the city, to get their input on sort of the immediate downtown improvement. So, we sent out the notice for you all. I have publicly noticed it as a gathering of officials, but we are going to the businesses at the Walter Phillips Conference Room, so I, all 21 Planning Commission Council and EBA would fill up the conference room, and we won't have room for businesses. So, I wanted you all to be aware of it and certainly welcome a rep from each of the bodies, but I do hope that we, mostly our audience is the business, so we can hear directly from them. And then we'll give you a full report.
Ms. Conley?
Cindy, I just have a question about the community survey and how that's going to be publicized and to different groups in the community. Will it go through boards and commissions, or?
Yes, so, the plan is right now that we would have talked to the chamber, and they've agreed to send it to their membership. We would do all our normal press release, Facebook, social media things. I plan to talk to the Legal Women Voters in Vipis and ask them to use it on their distribution list. Also to speak to the superintendent to reach out to the school morning report distribution group, and...
Advertising?
We had talked about advertising and maybe doing a commentary to the news press if there was open space consistent with the timeline of this. And it'll be on the website, and we're also going to do hard copies at the community center and the library, so it doesn't have to just be internet-based for those that prefer a hard copy.
Okay, you know what else, Mark? I don't know how that would work, but if, if there's a crawler at the bottom of the TV screen, so when this is played on TV, if people are watching it, they, they can have a little crawler across there?
We can do that, and we also have crawler TV screens now at the library and the community center.
Oh, right.
That we can do that at the TV stations.
Okay.
And I think Paul's in the audience, I think when he did the survey for the Transportation Chapter, about 400 responses?
Transportation Chapter was around 180, and Parks Chapter was 450.
So, we're starting to spread the word, I think, on getting engagement through our survey tools.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions on CIP process? If not, we will thank you, or we do thank you for getting together with us, Planning Commissioners. We appreciate all the good work you do, and we hope to see you soon. Why don't we take a five-minute break to let you all get on out of here, and any folks who might want to do that as well? And we'll reconvene about 8:45. Thank you again for coming this evening, we appreciate it. Yes, our auditors will be speaking to us shortly. Thank you. Good evening, why don't we go ahead and get back started? We need to probably accelerate our, our timetable here. We're all going to be, maybe not you all, but the rest of us will be here pretty late. So, Mr. Duncan, if you can, come on and join us, and Ms. Oliver. And again, we're going to try to accelerate the rest of our meeting to try to get out of here at a decent hour. We do have a closed session at the end as well. So, welcome, welcome to you all, and thank you for coming out this evening and for the good work you do for the city. Ms. Messner, who's going to go ahead and lead this presentation?
We'll let Mr. LaConde kick it off for us this evening.
Happy Monday, Council.
Happy Monday.
We will make it brief. I have our auditors from Brown Edwards, Jason Hartman and Megan Argonbright, and they will present the audit report to you. So, with that, take it away.
Thank you. I wanted to just, brief introduction, I am Jason Hartman, I'm the partner in charge of engagement. Megan Argonbright is the senior, she's the one who's been in the field overseeing the, the field work for, for most of the engagement. We are here to present the comprehensive annual financial reports. Virginia State law requires it be presented at a public meeting, so we're here to do that. Richard had previously said I spend about five minutes on each page here. I'm guessing you guys, no, 120 pages. Point being, there is a lot of information in here, and so, what I'm going to do is give you a quick overview of what we do, what our objectives are, and point you to a few key things, and, and of course, be available for whatever questions you might have now, or if you think of questions later, please feel free to reach out to us directly or through Richard. So, we do, we do an audit, but we really have three main objectives. One is to report on the financial statements as to whether they're materially correct in accordance with general accepted auditing standards. The other is to report on your internal controls, and the third is to report on your compliance with laws and regulations. And there are different reports, there's a different report on each of those within this document. Our opinion on the financial statements is what I'll talk about first. It is what's called a clean or an unmodified opinion, meaning that we do think the statements are materially correct. There are two sections in your opinion this year that are not there typically, and that is because, one, is an emphasis of a matter paragraph. Doesn't mean that there's anything incorrect or wrong, it's just when there is something very significant that the auditor feels he should make sure that any reader of the opinion knows about and to go look further in the details, and that is the water sale. So, and there's just a brief mention and a reference to a note that describes that transaction. And the other paragraph is because two new accounting standards were adopted this year. One, GASB 65, is primarily just a presentation change. You'll notice when you look at the statements, there's a new category on the balance sheets called deferred inflows of resources, and another new category called deferred outflows. And it's technical accounting things, but the GASB felt it necessary to split certain things out into a category other than assets and liabilities. I would tell you, for all practical purposes, for most readers, there's not a lot of difference. There was one minor difference in how debt issuance costs are treated. Those are now expensed rather than being capitalized and amortized, and so, any that remained on the books were written off as part of this adoption. You guys had some of that, it was a small number, three or $400,000, and there's a footnote that describes that, so minimal impact there. The second new standard that was adopted is GASB 67, which deals with the reporting of the pension plans, and this applies to governments like you that have their own plan or governments that are part of another plan. Basically, it, it amounts mostly to presentation and increased disclosure. No change in any numbers as a result of that adoption. But when you look at the footnote on the pension, you will see some new information there. We also report, as I mentioned earlier, on internal control. There's nothing new in your report on internal control. There is one significant deficiency reported that has been there for several years, and it has to do with the fact that with the limited size of the staff that you have, it's not possible to achieve an ideal separation of duties, meaning you want, you want to avoid cases where one person has both access to assets and record-keeping over those assets. And you have a few instances where that's not the case. And like I say, it's not anything new, it's been there, it's not uncommon for a government with a staff your size. The compliance report is clean. Government auditing standards, also called the Yellow Book, require us to report on compliance, and we would report anything to you that, any non-compliance that we thought could have a material impact on the financials. There was nothing like that. The Auditor of Public Accounts also requires us to test certain compliance items. They have a much lower tolerance for what needs to be reported, so there are some minor items reported there. They're detailed on, in the last section of the report called the Compliance Section, but they are not very material at all, and they don't rise to the level that they get included in our actual audit opinion. So, as far as just a few things to comment on in the financial statements themselves, of course, you're all aware, the water system was sold, so when you look at that balance sheet, you'll see it's, it's all zeros. And if you look at the income statement, you'll see all the inflows and outflows, and again, comes down to a zero net change. And there is a footnote, Note 19, which outlines the details of that transaction. It's a pretty complex transaction, pretty complex footnote. And again, I'm, I'm happy to, to cover that in more detail or answer any questions that you all might have. The other couple of things I'll point out is there are two new funds. The Special Transportation Fund to account for the, the new money coming in from the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, and the New Stormwater Fund to account for those, those funds. I would also point out specifically, GASB 67, the new pension requirement I mentioned earlier, that, one of the disclosures that they added was a sensitivity analysis, and that's on page 58 of the CAFR, I believe that's correct, I'm sorry, 73, I think, page 73. Could you double-check me on the page reference there? But basically, that tells you what happens to your pension numbers if the assumed rates of return are moved up a percentage or down a percentage. And you guys show, yeah, it's page 62. You guys, right now, show a $2 million asset, and a change in the rate would move it either to an $8 million liability or if it went the other direction, a $10 million asset. So, that is some new information. Accounting standards today don't require that you record your net pension liability, or in your case, for the city plan, it's a small asset. Next year, GASB 68 will be in effect, and 68 requires you to record that. So, it's, it's probably a minimal, minimal effect for the city's plan. However, the schools participate in the statewide teacher pool, and the most recent numbers, and there are estimates that I've seen, and they're as of June 12, but those show about $39 million of pension liability attributable to Falls Church. And so, next year, that, that number will appear on your, the city's government-wide financial statements in the Component Unit column. Has no impact on funding or contributions, but it gets that liability on the books. It brings the books more into line with what the commercial sector has been doing for years. I often get questions as to what the impact will be on bond ratings and things of that nature. I don't think very significant, because frankly, the bond rating agencies are smart enough to know that's all there, and they, I think they've taken that into account already in their analyses. But this gets it on the books and gets on the balance sheet. And the same thing goes for your other post-employment plans. That liability's not there either, there's no new accounting rule yet to require that, but, but I suspect you'll be seeing that in, in not too long, a new standard will require those numbers to be recorded as well. So, that is a very quick overview of this big document, about 800 hours of work, so.
Great, thank you, we appreciate the summary. Why don't we start with Mr. Duncan, who's Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee? Do you have anything, Phil?
Just a couple of things, thank you. And thank you for your hard work, thank you, Mr. LaConde, for making hard copies, which I know we will all take to our bedsides and study page by page. And you think I'm kidding, but we really will, because if I don't, my mother-in-law will catch me on something.
I look forward to it.
You know, I, I think it would be useful to mark the minute that you started your presentation, which was it about? I'm not sure exactly, but about 8:50, because the areas that you covered, the questions that you anticipated and answered, are the subject of considerable, with an emphasis on considerable, discussion in the online forum, online fora in our community. And, and the answers that you gave, I think, would be useful for all in the community who are interested in these topics to, to hear and to, you know, heed. What I heard you say, I, I won't repeat now, but I, I did want to ask you, at one point, you said that the internal controls that were flagged as deficient are not uncommon for a city our size. But I do want to ask, as you noted, we've created two new funds, Stormwater and the Transportation Fund. We have sold the water system, and so, we've come into another $20 million. At what point does our city, which I, I hope will continue to grow and prosper, become a city of such size and the money that we're dealing with of such a magnitude that, based on your experience, you would suggest that we, you know, not think of ourselves as a city that size anymore and somehow address these deficiencies?
Okay. The size, really, that is important is not so much the size of the city in terms of its budget or its population, it's the size of the staff. And the, the smaller the staff is, the more different things each person has to do. So, I, I see localities that have larger budgets or larger populations that have the very same issues, and I see some that are smaller, who are, in whatever way, have managed to be staffed differently, and they have better separation of duties. So, you are, it is a function of your staff size, not necessarily the size of the city in terms of revenue or population, or complexity even, number of times.
All right, well, that's helpful to know, and as we move forward and, you know, take action on some of the things that, that you identify here in the report, I think it would be helpful for us to, to take a look at some of those jurisdictions that, as you say, have arranged their staffs in a way that, that address these separation of duties issues, which, you know, do come up, they've caused us no problem so far, as far as we all know. And, and yet, they're a concern, and at least to me, they're, you know, a somewhat greater concern as we have more money washing around. And so, that's just one takeaway from, from your work that I would hope that we, as a council, would, would act on. Finally, in terms of program evaluation and management generally, I know this is not strictly speaking what the CAFR does, but do you have any observations about how we're staffed to, to monitor, you know, the, the things that we undertake, the money that we spend, the, the efficacy of that? I mean, are there other jurisdictions that do more in terms of program management and evaluation than it seems that we do?
Megan, do you? I, I don't think I can really comment on that based on my involvement.
Right. We're auditing your, your financial state, no, sorry. We're auditing your financial statements, so we're not performing a test of controls or evaluating how the city's operating as a whole, if that makes sense. We're looking at your internal controls, but we don't opine on them, we're not testing them. And I, I'm not sure if that was what you were getting at.
The answer can certainly be, you know, that's another consultant's job, and I'm, I'm pleased to hear that. I mean, I'm, I'm satisfied to hear that. I think that's all I have, I just appreciate your work, and, and I would commend the comments that you've made and the answers that you've given to people who are interested in how we manage our money here. And I hope that the council could talk about some of the other jurisdictions that you may be able to point us to that have things arranged differently. Maybe they've got some good ideas, or maybe we'll end up being happy with what we have, but I would like to look at some other situations and see if we could address those deficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, Ms. Oliver, any comments, questions?
No questions at this time.
Okay, okay. Vice Mayor Snyder?
I'd like to be more, even more precise than Councilmember Duncan on the subject of internal controls and ask the city manager to report back with a plan to address the comments within existing staffing. Thank you.
Mr. C?
Just thanks, I would echo that. So, after I left the life of pre-prime decisions, working for the federal government, I thought I'd never see OMB 133, and here it is, page 116. We, we all became very familiar with GASB 25, 67, and the 68 when we debated the, what we should do with our water fund proceeds. we should do with our waterfront proceeds. Is it 800 hours of work went into this document?
Off the top of my head.
So, thank you for that effort. I echo what Councilmember Snyder said with regard to internal controls.
Great, thank you. I actually would also like to echo those, so it sounds like you've got a few folks who would like to take a closer look at that. Let me ask you just sort of a general question, summary question. How do we look? You know, you guys look at a lot of communities, I would imagine. What's your take on our finances and our financial situation at this time?
It's pretty solid right now. I mean, as far as if you look at the balance sheet and fund balance levels and things of that nature, the balance sheet looks good. Of course, you have just done the major transaction that resulted in some influx of major funds. So, I think it's a focus now is sustainability and keeping that going for the future, you know, how those funds are utilized and making sure that, however they're utilized, the activity that that utilization creates or whatever can be sustained long-term.
Okay. And the reserves that we've got, I mean, we've had this discussion internally, but something like 12% to 17%, but more on the 17% side. Is that seem reasonable, based on the other communities that you have experienced with?
Yeah, I think you all have a policy, a specific fund balance policy you've put in place, and that's, we look at that. I don't remember the numbers. Are they above?
Well, when you're budgeting.
I think it's about 17% right now.
Yeah, and when you're budgeting, you're taking that into consideration every year and staying in line with what your policy is, yeah.
But does the policy seem reasonable to you all?
Compared to other localities, right off the cuff, I don't recall thinking it was out of line at all.
Okay. Okay. Trying to think if there's anything else. I guess that's about all. Someone else got anything else?
Just, could I, to follow on, Vice Mayor Snyder, could you answer that a little bit more specifically, not tonight, but just take a little closer look at our fund balance policy, which calls for, you know, a range of 12% to 17% of expenditures? And, you know, just give us a little detail, maybe, about how jurisdiction our size compares to other similar jurisdictions.
Yeah. Yeah, we can certainly do that. We.
Mr. LaConde has given us information from the national groups, and that's helpful. But again, it's a question that comes up in the public a lot, and it's helpful to be able to say, we've asked that question, and here's the answer from experts.
Okay, I guess with that, we will thank you, or do thank you, for all the good work you've done in the 800 hours and counting that you spent with us. So, thank you so much, and enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. So, why don't we go on to the next item, since we've changed the agenda just a bit to allow our city attorney to head on out of here a bit early than she might otherwise? I guess we're on to the voluntary concessions, is that right?
Yes, so council, you have in your packet this evening a draft standard agreement that has been predominantly worked on by a breadth of staff team and looking at other localities. And so, we wanted to bring it to you this evening to have a first macro look at it, general comments and questions from council, but then also to talk about next steps, whether council wants to continue working on this from a work session committee as a whole, or to try to schedule a time with the EDC committee to work on it in more detail, which has been challenging, just because of schedules. So, what you see here is, you know, broad areas that we've been talking about over the course of the time built into this. We do have, as you mentioned, Mayor, the city attorney here, and also Rick Goff, who are key authors in this, and then Jim Snyder has been working on it as well, but he's up with the planning commission this evening. So, be glad to get general comments, reaction, and then some direction for next steps.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from anyone, questions? Carol, do you want to maybe come on up, or Rick as well? Would you all mind coming up in case there are any questions for you, either one of you? Any comments, questions? I tell you what, people are thinking, unless you got, do you have something?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a comment.
Okay, sure. I've got a few as well, but go ahead.
Yeah. Well, we've been working on this a long time, but I don't know that we're close to the finish line on this, so I think, you know, if you're looking for a step forward, somewhere here, someone, some group, somebody, somebody, needs to probably spend some really focused time on this. And I just can't help but think that January, February, March may not be the best times to do that. Does that make any sense? It does need some work, but, you know, there's some urgency to this matter that we need to have it finalized. And I would ask Rick Goff to comment on that, for the applicability, then, yeah, we should carve out the time and work on this. In the meantime, though, I think there's a bunch more stuff that we need to look at in here. And I don't know that we would necessarily put out to the general public for them to comment on this, largely an internal document, is it not? So.
Yeah. And I think there has been some good work on it, and there was a desire to keep it moving, because you do have development applications coming before you, and so to have this in advance for a future one for negotiation could help. But you are about to launch into the busy budget season, so it is a challenging time.
I mean, I think the idea is, you're absolutely right, that this is not something, I don't think council as a whole is going to get into the weeds on all the details, and a lot of work needs to be done, but the reality is, we have a new project, Mason Road, that's going to be coming up the next couple of months, and I think these voluntary concessions need to raise the bar from what we've had previously. And then we can add additional subject matter or additional details to be beneficial to the community, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel every time we get a new case that comes through the door, a new project. And I think that's the idea behind this, is that we can spend our time, not necessarily working on the details of this going forward, but on the big-picture items. So, I think ultimately, this document will need additional work, either by the EDC or by various boards and commissions that could weigh in and have the document come back to us. But I think the idea was just to have an initial cut, give some feedback to staff on areas that may need additional work, additional discussion, analysis, et cetera. And so, that's the purpose, is not really a long, detailed discussion tonight, but just.
With that regard, I think that it's probably at a point where we can, it's certainly a whole lot better than what we had before, which, all these different pieces that's, you know, on one piece of paper, so. And you've looked at this for legal sufficiency and how it comports with other documents you've seen of this nature?
I have. I've been doing some work on this recently. I have compared this, I will say, with what Arlington has, as you know, they have some 68 standard conditions or something. And really, the, in terms of the general subject matters and the issues that are covered, they're actually pretty similar. When I went through and checked to see whether the, what the, whether each of the topics that's covered in their conditions is covered here, most of the topics are included. And I think there's some more specificity that could be added, but that'll be a question of, on each project, and how far do we want to take it? But I think, I think it is a working document still, and not intended that this is finished, but that's why we also wanted to get some input and see where you all wanted us to head with it further.
Okay, speak to that end. Is there any comments the folks have as to additional subject matter or anything else that might be done, the big-picture changes? Ms. Oliver?
I guess the question that I have is that this is a fairly exhaustive list, although I understand it's not quite as long as Arlington's. And I don't have a good sense, from quickly glancing at it, how we would prioritize or balance the expectations of the developer in terms of, are we saying that we expect them to meet all of these, or are we saying this is our sort of wish list? And then my question would be, how do we prioritize or weight what we get?
I mean, that's a good question. If you were to go in Arlington, for example, their standard conditions are really an expectation for, they will expect all of those or desire all those. Some of these, as far as contributions go, I think have been added recently, as far as contributions that weren't necessarily expectations in the future, or in the past. There's a few blanks in here that I think are requests for, you know, voluntary contributions to certain subject areas that probably were not made in the past, such as library, public art space, open space. And so, those are things that are kind of new competing, potential competing. This is, this document, as you just heard, is a work in progress. So, it may be that all these things don't make it into the final addition to this, but I think the idea from staff's perspective was to throw these ideas out for further discussion, and whether they are priorities for council and the community as far as sources of request for contributions as new developments come along. So, I think some of these will be subject to negotiation with developers, but the idea is probably that most of them would not be.
I think that's a good question and part of one, that as we go into the next step, we need to have a good discussion on, so at the end of the day, it matches to council's priorities and expectation before staff start on any kind of negotiations or preliminary meetings with developers. So, the next step process, as Mr. Z was talking about, as to who noodles this more, will be important to include that type of discussion.
Conlon?
So, these voluntary concessions, are they just for buildings that are requesting special exceptions? Or is it for any building being built by right, or?
No, you would be able to, these would be something that a developer who sought the benefits of a special exception would be agreeing to as part of that application, but not a by-right building, certainly.
Mr. Duncan?
I think we all received the note from Ron Bressot about his concerns on affordable housing. And I just wanted to kind of mark that for the record as a concern of mine as well. You know, the good thing about developers showing an interest in the city is that each project is an opportunity to reap additional community benefits. The outcome, though, is that now multiple worthy causes rush to the stage when we get a project before, it's parks, library, arts, transportation, you know, all very worthy community areas that we would like to do more for, but I think to some degree, they have supplanted the affordable housing's traditional place at the table as a mandatory, not an optional. And so, the most recent projects that we've approved have met only the bare minimum of our requirement for the number of ADUs and actually have not really come up to the level that we ask for income eligibility. Instead of 60%, we're, you know, letting developers give us 80, 90, 100% income-eligible units, which are obviously not significantly advancing the cause of adding to our stock of affordable housing. So, I, as we talk about this further, I would like to get a feeling for how my colleagues feel about that. I mean, maybe that's just the way it is, and affordable housing is now going to be one of those things that is just one of those things, as opposed to what it used to be, which I think was one of the, one or two top things that we definitely wanted to do because of the, all the benefits associated with that, you know, workforce housing and environmental benefits that accrue from people living closer to where they work, and, you know, to the degree that the units are accessible to younger, lower-paid people. It helps us with that demographic that we're weakest on here in the city. So, without going any further into the merits of where affordable housing should be in the firmament, I would like to see this as an opportunity to discuss that with all of you all and with the groups that have been advocating for that for many years and come to an understanding of where we are today and where we want to be going forward.
Thank you. I've got a couple, if no one else says anything, just a couple of little things or areas that I think would be good to be addressed. One is just requiring developers to provide safe pedestrian walkways during construction. For example, right now, we have the Harris Teeter. Excuse me? Oh, is it already actually in there? Because I did not see it. I must have skipped it. Yeah, so, I mean, I'd like still to take it farther. For example, right now, we have the Harris Teeter where there's no sidewalk on Broad Street for like two years. And so, you have people walking on a major road with their backs turned to traffic, which is extremely dangerous. And so, I would want to make sure it really goes to the level of providing a true safe area that's approved by the city and basically provide a pedestrian plan for people to walk through on these construction sites, because as this goes forward, I think we're going to have more and more construction on major roads, and it's really dangerous. And maybe we could beef up that section just a bit. As far as design requirements in the retail, actually, before we get to that, let me ask you, on three, commercial space, no more than 40% of the area designated as retail and retail service shall be utilized for retail service. Is that our policy right now, that you can use 40% of any retail space for retail service on the ground floor?
No, it's not a general policy. That was taken from one of the previous agreements. In approaching this, we looked at all 14 previous agreements for projects that were approved, even if they weren't built. So, that was a piece that I believe we took out of Pearson Square as one of the examples of a way of approaching that.
So, but, I mean, you just sort of picked that out, because to me, I think a starting point would better to basically be that it's all retail. You know, in other words, and that we will go work from there back, because Pearson Square, at least at the present, is not a major commercial street. Maple Avenue is not, whereas Route 7 is. And so, I'm not sure that'd be the one I'd want to use as the base for determining what percentage is non-retail. And again, that's something for discussion, but I think, I would prefer a number that starts more at a stricter amount of retail. I'd like to see retail on our retail streets, on the major retail roads. So, that's something I would consider, take another look at. Design requirements, I think having some sort of transparency requirements for the windows is something that would be good to add, and a requirement that you can't paper up the windows. For example, the Broadway has had the windows papered up now for, I think it's been several years, as you walk by, which is really not conducive to a ground-floor retail experience. I'd also like to see the retail ingress/egress be at grade without stairs. And I know ADA allows stairs at times, but just sort of as default setting, have the retail entrances be at grade is something to consider as a starting point. Bike racks as well, I know there's some discussion about that, but it doesn't seem very prescriptive. For example, the Hilton Garden Inn doesn't have any bike racks at grade, and apparently there's not going to be any in front of the hotel. And I guess I'd like a requirement to see that the bike racks are visible, you know, on the street and within a certain number of feet, say 50 feet from the entrance. And then the bike racks for the users of the place, the tenants, et cetera, be in a convenient place, not necessarily three stories down in the garage, but some kind of idea with that. Lighting, which is 276. I would like to see kind of a move towards dark-skylighting, which is essentially directed lighting that doesn't spill out in the neighborhoods. The Hilton Garden Inn to me really has a lot of light spillover to the immediate neighbors, which I think would be great if we can avoid doing that in the future. And so, if we can tighten this up, maybe make reference to lights, dark-skylighting, when it abuts residentially zoned property in particular, I think would be helpful, or maybe blocking any place where you have, you know, cars at grade, having a knee wall to block that. I think also some standards for structured parking would be good to have, design standards for structured parking, such as having landscaping in front of structured parking, vines maybe growing down, or, you know, wire, some kind of mesh or something to basically obstruct structured parking from the general public would be another thing I would think would be good. I'm not real fond on 315 or so for having columns intrude into parking spaces. And so, I guess my inclination would be, if we can, to just get rid of allowing columns in the parking spaces. They seem really difficult to navigate. In the 350s, there's the bicycle storage again. I think it'd be good to have a ratio, you know, such as you have in Arlington, maybe one to three for residential, one park, one bike space for every three residents, et cetera, for, a standard for that. Let's see what else we've got here. I didn't see any mention requiring the sidewalk areas be dedicated, either in fee or in easement, which I think would be good. There's a general reference to easements, but it doesn't talk about the streetscape being dedicated or conveyed by easement. Trying to think of what else I've got. I tell you, I don't want to belabor this. I think you've done a great job, and it's really raised the bar. I probably already have belabored it, but I think you've really raised the bar quite a bit, and I think we've got maybe a little bit more work to do, but I think this is really a big improvement in what we've seen before. Ms. Oliver?
I just wanted to add on the sidewalk accessibility, that not shutting down a bus stop for the duration of the project would be helpful. stop for the duration of the project would be helpful. It could be moved.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, lines 30, 344 through 347 shuttle service, I'd like an option to be contribution to a city transit project. And then in historic acknowledgements, which is line 570 through 572, that needs a lot more potential contribution to historic resources. And you can look for how other communities have dealt with that, but that's pretty slim right now. Thanks.
Mr. Z?
Yeah, since we're digging into the research. So we understand that this is pretty much a base level document that you must more or less meet these conditions. And in other places you incentivize other things that you want to get so that, you know, you get some trade offs. But we're clearly not at that level yet. I would like to introduce some concept of a business improvement district. I call it sustainability fund. And not necessarily environmental, but it would be kind of an impact kind of fund that would pay for maybe additional maintenance on the public parks, could pay for some additional city staff as necessary to address certain of our priorities. Would help us get a start on parking authority. So these are some of the things that we could use that money for. And I don't know how to index that to a particular project, but something like the spectrum development of that size, I would think 150K each and every year would be a good levy.
Okay, other comments, questions? Mr. Duncan?
Just one, thank you for going over it in such detail, which reminds me then in the line 337 area, when we're talking about on-street parking restrictions, the difficulty that has arisen with some of the, well, at least one of the new developments is residents of that building who have parking in the garage downstairs not using it and instead using the neighborhood streets. And I don't know how we control that. I mean, is it legal to require someone to park in the building in which they live? Or do we have to come up with some other workaround like a neighborhood parking, you know, tag available only to people who live in the single-family homes on that street? But it's an issue that comes up every time we build a new building that has a residential component. And I feel like there ought to be some way for us to address that concern before we put the building up.
And we can certainly look into it and see if there are ways that we can work that concept into it. It is somewhat difficult to, I mean, one has to be careful about how one restricts or differentiates among people and how they can park on public streets. But we can certainly do a little more work on looking into that and seeing if there's some way we can accomplish the goal.
Oliver?
If I could just add, it's not directly related to this, but we do have an issue in the city where homes were built without off-street parking. And that's separate from this, but that's something that we may need to take a look at because those folks that don't have off-street parking never think, gee, I should put a driveway in. They always think, I should have the right to park all seven of my cars on the street the way I always have.
Okay. Well, I tell you, I think this was meant to be a preliminary discussion about some things that we might want to add for consideration by developers through the voluntary process that they go through. To get further input on this, is there a desire to have, for example, the EDA take a look, the EDC take a second look at this? Would people be agreeable to having those other bodies weigh in on this? We do have Mason Rowe coming up, so I think the idea would be that before that gets to the final stages, we'd be able to offer some additional things that we'd want to have discussions with the developer about and try to raise the bar on the voluntary concessions from what they've necessarily been in the past. So would that be agreeable to folks?
Yeah, I think the EDC ought to have a broader dominion over this and look at the next revolution and then be responsible for getting out to various boards and commissions that have a stake in this.
Okay. I know Nader's not here right now, but I would like to move this along at a measured pace so that we can actually have something before Mason Rowe comes to the decision point. And so I guess I would just ask, even though the chair is not here, that the rest of the folks in the EDC keep in mind that let's try to push this thing through maybe in the next six weeks or so.
Six weeks.
That's just something I threw out, but to maybe have a next turn at this in six weeks?
Yeah, I just think having a deadline that's specified would be helpful.
How about six weeks? All right. All right, sounds good. So why don't we move on to the next item then? But thank you all for coming and all the hard work you've done, both of you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
So the next item is the budget guidance document, correct?
Correct.
So this is, I mean, essentially we've had discussion previously about budget guidance per se, but this is an actual document and a revised version of the document that council's produced over the past couple of years that have more formally set forth in writing some of the expectations of council for the city manager, et cetera, as we go through this process. Is that right, Mr. Snyder?
That would be correct. And so on page four of five, lines one through 53 refer to the budget guidance that the mayor was talking about that has been sort of the guiding principles that the city manager has used to develop the budget. That's presented to you in March for deliberation. This is currently on your schedule for adoption, January 12th, if you want to pursue that. Staff is obviously already having to start doing the development process now because it takes a fair amount of time before we can deliver it to you in March. Before looking at any of the broad highlights in the management, the actual guidance, I did want to call out to your attention in the cover memo prepared by Mr. Shields and Mr. LaConde, an update on the revenue expenditures and expenses from the December joint session. And that is a revenue projections that is downward trending, that is predominantly due to state funding, but also five months of non-real estate revenues now that the finance of Mr. LaConde can project. And we're not seeing the growth as had been previously projected when we did three, five, and seven-year averaging. So with that factor and the real estate not done, but with a good estimate from our real estate assessor, we are looking that with a no change in tax rate, that basically general government and schools will need to remain essentially flat to the FY15 or the current budget. So I wanted to put that into context for you as you look at the budget guidance statements that are on page four and five that speak to looking at efficiencies in any cost-saving measures and partnerships, looking at a CIP investment with a heavy capital focus in this budget, and maintaining a competitive employee base and a level of service that the community wants, and then doing multi-year forecasting. So those are just some highlights that we wanted, oh, and I guess to call out specifically in line 41, council's action in ordinance 1930 to allocate in this next budget cycle recommendations for your consideration of the water sale proceeds, which would be part of the CIP process. So those are some highlights that I wanted to call to your attention. And then Mr. LaConde and I would be glad to answer any questions and get direction on how you want to proceed with the budget guidance.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments? It's basically this two-page document here that we're discussing right now. So a lot of this is very similar, I think, to what we've had in past years, some new additions, the 15%, 85%. I can't remember the NVTA, 30 and 70 was in there before, maybe it was. But I think very similar to what we've seen in past years. Does anybody have any comments or anything they'd like to? Ms. Conley?
My first question though is on the first page, lines 21 and 22. It says 2.2 million is required to cover the new debt service and be the use of non-recurring revenue for FY 2015 school division operations. What does that refer to?
I don't have the document in front of me, but would it? As we attempted to balance the budget last year, we used $1.3 million to fund balance. That's what it refers to.
And why is that attributed to the school division? That's my question. If we balanced it, why is that 1.3?
Well, as we developed the budget, we get budget guidance from council.
Right.
And we met our budget guidance. What caused the change in the balancing of the budget was the school division.
So the schools' requests came in at a higher amount in order to address enrollment and their costs as forwarded by the school board. So the general government budget was balanced for last year's adopted guidance not to grow any more than the economic growth. So that basically met the, a balanced budget. To offset the difference was the increased debt service for the school and the school board's request. Basically, to have a balanced budget, fund balance was used based on what council wanted to allocate. That fund balance isn't a recurring use, so you've got to fill the hole as you start FY 16.
But it often becomes a recurring use because often there is fund balance there. Like we had this discussion before, right? That hole is there and then it gets filled and then it's there.
I don't think you'll be seeing that going forward now that we finish the last year of aligning the tax rate to the fiscal year, so you don't have that cushion, the surplus.
Right.
So that money has to be programmed into the FY 16 budget. You can't assume at this point there will be surplus because we've aligned those cycles.
Right.
And the projection is actually lower than budgeted, which decreases the likelihood even further of surplus.
So is there a way in this budget guidance then to include when there is a surplus, if there is a surplus, that money, is that in there?
Budget shall also provide 2022.
You also have lines 52 and 53 that I would say address that because your adopted financial policies dictate that if there is fund balance in excess of your policies, that that money goes to capital reserve for your long-term reinvestment. And you also see that it is on line 49, which is one of the new things, as the mayor noted, there's a couple new things of actually establishing the vehicle fleet reserve fund. Okay. So your policies already address where the surplus goes.
I guess my question is, can that be changed? Does it have to always go there? Can we change, does we have to go back and change the policy?
Do we need to go back and change the policy? It's an adopted resolution by council.
So then what we're saying here, 2021 and 22, does that contradict 52 and 53?
No, because your budget has to be balanced and you're giving direction to not raise the tax rate and to balance the budget within those resources.
Right, but 21.
What it means is that if the budgets come back and there was money left over, then we would prioritize it. It doesn't mean that we generated a surplus. It means that based on the budget guidance given, if the revenue projections, just for the sake of discussion, were 5% and departments gave us budgets that only had 4% growth, that excess would be prioritized to fund other items in the budget. Has nothing to do with surpluses.
Okay, so it's the unspent budgeted money that can be reprogrammed?
That it also could be, we're projecting revenues today on January 5th, and by the time you adopt the budget on April 23rd, we will know hopefully the state's budget, we will know the majority of the year's revenue, we'll know real estate by then. So the revenue projections that we're building a proposed budget on could be higher. And so then you could allocate that on prioritize because it will not be surplus yet because it hasn't been at the end of a fiscal year.
It would just be budgeted, budgeted excess.
So that's how you'd have to do, you'd have to allocate it during the current, during the budgeted year?
Yes.
It doesn't become surplus until we move into the next year?
Yes, until you have the results of operations.
So this would be developing the FY 16 budget to start July 2015 based on our best estimates of revenues. It could be different between now and April, most likely will. So if there's some changes, you could adjust that budget during that development stage because it's just a budget. After the close of that year and we do the accounting and the audit report, then the excess becomes surplus. Then it falls under your financial policies of line 52 for capital reserves.
So the adjustments that we made in September, new dump truck, new sheriff's cars, that was not surplus, that was allocating?
That was allocating unspent money.
Before it became surplus.
Right, you had already allocated the excess revenue.
Okay.
And that's the 1.3 in the fund balance use. So you allocated that to fund FY 15 instead of it going into the fund balance, which is why that was one-time money. It now has to be provided for in FY 16. You've got to fill the hole.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Ms. Conley, for teasing that out further. So my understanding of what I've just heard is that the 1.3 million we drew from fund balance last time, we did so because we knew that we would still be at or above policy in the fund balance even if we used that 1.3 million. And I believe we were, right? We ended up above 17%. Going forward then, the question is, by aligning the tax and budget years, have we reduced the risk, or risk, I don't know if that's the right word, reduced the likelihood of an excess to the point where it's approaching nominal? In other words, it's not going to be so much that we're going to be able to draw, you know, a million dollars out of it. It's not, we hope, going to be like that in this current cycle. And it particularly won't be like that if our performance numbers and the contribution from the state continue to be tepid at best.
That's correct.
So we will find ourselves in a different situation than we found ourselves in last year, which is, I think, for the sake of transparency to the good, because the hardest thing of the whole process is when we have a headline that says, you know, council raises taxes one week and the next week, you know, council told there is $2 million surplus, you know, the public naturally can't get their head around that. And hopefully we'll be on a trajectory where that will not be the case going forward.
I would add that given the prioritization and the needs of capital, most of your resources are going to go to capital and so there won't be those kind of options for resources. In fact, it's going to be probably very hard to fully fund the requested CIP.
Just one, yes, thanks. One reminder, when do we get the real estate numbers, February?
They get mailed out in February, yes. But I will have, I will have numbers for you, I would say, before the end of the month.
Before the end of this month. So when budget finance meets at the end of January?
Will be very close.
We'd be, okay, good. So by the end of January, we would have that, which is obviously a very important number to know.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Conley, last word?
My one more question is lines 24 and 25 of the budget guidance statement. There had been a salary study done last fall and I don't think we've seen the results of that salary study. Is that what lines 24 and 25 go to?
It would be referring to that. We have completed the compensation study and have done the second review and the human resources director has received that. And so I believe we will target a January, February work session to brief council on that.
And do you have a sense that we're already competitive in the regional labor market or there, it's going to require some adjustment on certain salaries?
I think generally the results are that we I think generally, the results are that we are in a competitive range, but there are some positions that will need adjustment in the overall long-term pay scale for equity and some policies will need some updating.
Okay. So do you, we don't have a sense of how, how big that number is?
No, the report just came in, so we need to finish the review, and then we'll be able to give a proper report. I don't want to miss state.
Right. So that'll all be reflected when we get the eventuals?
Yes.
We'll know that beforehand.
Correct. So this is a general statement that council has maintained in the past to make sure that we're competitive and not lose our small staff that multitask to other locations. And then council authorized the study to confirm where we stood in the market, and we'll have that data for you.
Okay, good.
Mr., let's go to Vice Mayor Snyder, then go back to you.
Sure. A couple points. The relatively new information here about the tax revenue generation on page one of our document, can that be provided generally to interested parties, including the school board? It should be formally provided to them as soon as information like this becomes available. I think the key decision-makers all need to have it, not just us. So that would be a request. Number two, there's a constant struggle in the community to understand the various funds and the policies. And it doesn't need to be in here, but we need to find clearer, more consistent ways to explain these various fund, what are they, what are the policies, why are they there? It's a constant struggle because people who don't want to live within the constraints are looking for an excuse to get out of the constraints. And one of the excuses is, well, you've got all this money piled up, and what's it there for? You ought to use it to buy down the tax rate, or whatever the argument is. So that's a constant problem. The other thing, which is a point that I keep making, which is that it's my belief that other jurisdictions in our region are getting huge amounts of direct and indirect subsidies from the state and federal government that we don't get. The Dulles Corridor is basically a creation of the federal government. Crystal City is basically a creation or largely inhabited by the federal government. Can we find a way to put us in a different context so it doesn't make it look like our tax rates are so high because we're not, we're not paying attention to what we're supposed to be doing? In other words, it's not in here, but it's a, it's not, it's information, it's not just communications. Mr. LaConde, do you have a sense about what I'm saying? I mean, you, you, there's huge and consistent misunderstandings about some basic budget issues in the city. And the, the other point is that it's my view that our tax rate probably represents the two, the true tax rate of providing unsubsidized government service in Northern Virginia. If there's any way to back that up, I'd like to find out, or rebut it if it's not true. You see where I'm going with this?
Yes, I do. And you've already gotten an example of that from the school board, in that we do not get the same type of education aid that other jurisdictions do because we're a wealthy community.
Right, and I'd like to put some numbers on this so that people have a sense about-
We will look at that.
And, and it's the income taxes that we send down to Richmond that don't come, I, I, I mean, it's not going to make the pain any less. People, lots of folks just don't want to pay whatever the tax rate is, okay? I understand that. But at least, there, there's got to be a, more of a macro understanding about why our rate is the way it is, why other jurisdictions are able to get away with a lower rate. And, you know, that sort of thing would be very helpful, it seems to me, to the process.
We will look at it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. Any, Ms. Oliver?
Sorry, I, I just had three points. So line 20 says, does not require an increase in real estate tax rate. And that's an important point, I know, for a lot of people on council and, and for a lot of citizens. We don't have any reference in this budget guidance to fund balance or the use of one-time money for recurring expenses. And I, I just personally want to be very clear on the fact that I don't want to continue a pattern of using fund balance or dipping into fund balance to balance the budget, that, that that can't be sustained long-term. And particularly if we're using one-time money in the form of fund balance or something else to cover recurring expenses, it's going to be an issue. So I would like to see a budget that doesn't do that. And the other thing that I would like to suggest is that our budget guidance statement to the city manager, while it is particularly focused on our requirements for the budget itself, I wonder if we could add a point about having a clear communication plan and community engagement plan, similar to what has been developed for the CIP, that would be attached as a part of this budget guidance so that we're very clear on how we're communicating to the community, so that we can incorporate things such as what Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Snyder just said, and other aspects of making sure that we're explaining early on clearly in an effective manner what people are really getting on the city government's side.
Are there any issues with incorporating Ms. Oliver's recent comments?
Well, the first, the first one, if I understand it, is a position statement that, that is, of course, not unique to Ms. Oliver, but I think it takes away the flexibility that we have as council to maneuver within the budget. Now, I don't want to put that in the guidance. As a matter of fact, we may be more clear about that adamant it doesn't belong in that guidance.
I would argue that putting, does not require an increase in the real estate tax rate, takes away a lot of flexibility, too. And obviously, we may not be in a position to do, to do both, but if, if putting in that takes away flexibility, so does not requiring an increase.
So other comments?
Just, that's an interesting discussion. I mean, I, I think we would all agree that, in an ideal world, we would do neither. We would neither go into fund balance below policy, which we've never done in my time here, to, you know, get where we need to be. And, and we would not raise taxes either. So we're striving for that ideal. I mean, one thing I think's missing in our budget guidance and sort of in our general mindset overall is, we don't really set a target for ourselves and for staff to grow our revenues. I mean, that's, I think, fairly typical for jurisdictions to have targets for growth embedded in their budgets and performance evaluations for their employees and so forth, so that if we find ourselves, as we do every year, in a position of being, you know, a couple hundred thousand short, we should have a commitment to grow our revenue base every year by some figure that we could all discuss and agree on. And if we make that target, then bravo for us. And if we don't make it, we ask ourselves why. That's just a piece of the puzzle that we've never, as far as I know, really brought into our discussions here, that, I'm not suggesting that we should put it in this time around, but it is something that I think we all have in mind, and we should perhaps think about putting it in our budget guidance in future years.
Part of what this is, is a guidance document for the city manager. That's what it says, that's the title of it. So I'm not sure necessarily that putting in what Ms. Oliver says precludes us from making different decisions on any of this stuff. You know, this doesn't require the tax rate to stay flat. It's guidance for the city manager. And so I'm not sure that if we provide guidance, for example, as you've just suggested, it precludes action that we might take, or you might wish to take, or someone might want to take another way to solve a problem we're presented with in April or May, or whatever it is exactly, we come up with the final budget. So I guess, to me, I wouldn't have a major issue incorporating what you've just said because it is guidance. So it would tell the city manager, when you put your budget together, we don't want you to come and propose drawing down the, you know, the fund balance to this low level as a way to accomplish your budget. And so it is guidance for the city manager, not necessarily a requirement that we ultimately, at least that's how I understand it to be. It's the guidance to the city manager in presenting something to us. So I wouldn't probably have a major issue with what you've just described, Ms. Oliver, but others-
Well, I don't know why you, we need to be redundant about policy that's an factor already. I don't know why you would suggest drawing down to some, below some hypothetical level, 17%. He's got that in front of him already. I mean-
Well, I agree. I mean, it's actually, the beginning part of this, the precatory language says, adheres to adopted policies on fund balance and debt levels that keep the city on sound and sustainable financial footing. So I think in some ways, it's already in here. But in, in that regard, I don't necessarily have objection to it because it's already there and it's already established policy.
I, I guess my, my larger point, and I should not have maybe confused it with what is already an adopted financial policy, but it's the not using one-time money for a recurring expense.
And again, I personally don't have necessarily a problem putting that in the guidance for the city manager. And, you know, how we work this all out at the end of the day, I'm not sure how it's going to come together. It's always complicated, it's always hard, but this is the guidance for the city manager. And I personally don't necessarily have a major-
Well, you know, if we're going to suggest silly stuff, then I would say, go along the lines that Phil Duncan just mentioned with regard to raising revenues, that we ought to look at real estate impact fees on sales that become assessed. You know, pick a, pick a number to, to, as part of the, the sales package that gets passed on to buyers. There are other mechanisms that we haven't looked at yet, so maybe we should put that in there as well.
Other folks have comments or thoughts? Okay. I don't know where that leaves us.
Just to, just to the very specific, do we really pass the budget on April 20th or April 27th?
I don't know what the date is this year.
Sorry to be a niggling detail, but that, that would be the, that's a work session date, isn't it?
We can verify the date.
Okay, so line 69 just needs to say, April 27th.
The very end of the last page says the 27th.
Okay, so it's in a different place. Just make sure it's all April 27th.
All right, so as a way to just resolve this, are there others who have support or against what Ms. Conley, or no, Ms. Oliver just said?
I like Ms. Oliver's suggestion to have a communications plan in here, just a line that-
Okay, is there any objection to that?
No, I think we ought to, you know, you know, I, I, I think the idea of revenues is a very interesting idea. The only danger with that is that you got it in there, and you project the increased revenues, and they don't come about. How many times have we seen the state play that game? So, but I, I think it's not a bad thought. This one-time money issue is a constant debate in the community because of the lack of definition of what we really mean. So I don't object to the concept, but it is used as a club on either side of a debate, and it's not very productive. So we really ought to be clear what it is we really mean with this.
That's a good point.
All right, other comments? Let's try to wrap this discussion up. We do have miles to go before we sleep, so let's see what else we got here. All right, so the communication part, does anyone have objection to that? Okay, so, Ms. Messner, you've got some direction on the communication aspect of it. It sounds like there's really not a consensus to move forward on the one-time issue, unless I'm hearing differently. So I guess, I think maybe that, that's something that just doesn't have the majority support right now. Okay, so unless we have any other comments, why don't we move forward to the next item? Thank you, Mr. LaConde, for coming out this evening and sticking around, we appreciate it.
Mayor, I just asked, did you want any suggested language around revenue growth or focus on expanding other revenue options?
Well, I'll tell you that, I think Vice Mayor Snyder made an excellent point, that it's really hard to suggest to the city manager incorporate revenue growth, because that just introduces a new thing that we don't have control over, he doesn't have control over, and so-
I said it was a silly idea.
Well, I don't think it's a silly idea, I'm just not sure it's the right idea for this particular document, but I think it's a great idea and concept.
Thank you for the confirmation.
So I think probably we don't have a consensus on that, yeah. All right, let's go on to the next item, which is, is it the snow thing, or is it the appointments?
The snow. And as we move to that, I'll just confirm, do you want a revised version of the budget guidance on your docket for the 12th?
Yeah, why don't you get us a draft so we can take a look at in advance, and then presuming that there's no major issues, we'll put it on for the 12th.
Thank you.
And so on the snow, here's the reason I wanted to have a little bit of discussion about this. In the past, I've had these conversations with Dave, the day, you know, it's like four o'clock in the afternoon, let's go forward, let's cancel, and it's really hard, I have to say. You feel like whatever you decide is wrong, which is probably accurate. But so I wanted to get some input from everybody about how they want to approach snow days because it may snow, you know, next Monday, who knows? Do you all have thoughts on, would you like to tie it to some external event? You know, hey, if the courts are closed in, you know, Arlington or Fairfax, we're closed, no question about it. Or, you know, how do you guys want to handle the snow? I really want to come unless it's just 10 feet of snow, and let's get it on. Or, you know what, I don't want to risk staff or the public coming here on a bad day. I'm going to lean towards not having council meetings on a snow day. I'd just like to get a sense from you guys about what you all think as to meetings and snow and like. Anybody have any ideas? Vice Mayor Snyder?
I think what you propose is reasonable. I, I would just say that, that we ought to err, in my own view, is we ought to err in favor of holding the meeting as opposed to not, but I leave it up to you and, and do you want to do a, I don't, do you want to add some sort of a, a call under some circumstances? Or, or check with, you know what I mean?
I mean, I tell you, you and I had these conversations every time, like, every time it snowed, Dave and I'd be on the phone, and let's have the meeting, and then someone else would be wishing we were here. That is so dangerous, you're such an idiot, you know, somebody gets hurt. And so every time it happened, and I was like, always torn, I didn't know what the hell to do. And so I wanted to get some more guidance, you know, on this, and so I don't know what the answer is. I mean, I guess to me, I think the idea of having an earlier call on it is appropriate, like, fiddling around, which, you know, I always did because I wouldn't see what the weather's going to be, it's going to change, it'll rain, and it never did, or whatever. And so I think having an earlier call on this is a good idea. You'd like to err on the side of having the meetings. How about you, Dan? What's your thoughts on it?
No, I think, first of all, it's reasonable to have a cancellation policy in place. I think three o'clock's okay. If you're going to have it Thursday, same week, you have to have a notice to re-notice, I guess. And if that also turns out to be a really inclement weather kind of day, then at three o'clock, that gets pulled, and then after that, what happens?
Well, we just had the meeting the next meeting. You know, in other words, like, I think the idea would be, if there's something important that really has to happen, we'll have it on Thursday. If it's not something important, it's just some looking at the voluntary concessions another time, then we put off the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. We're, you know, I, I, I'm trying to get rid of all my snowshoes.
All right, who else? Phil looks like you've got a comment.
I would just, I would ask that the snow czar be somebody who does not live within walking distance of city hall.
All right, I want to point Phil as the-
Just saying, but those of us, those of us who live out, you know, on the steppes of Russia in, in our little city, yeah, I mean, I think what you've got here is pretty good. I, since we are committed to meeting virtually every Monday, except the occasional fifth Monday, I, I don't think it's the end of the world that, in the case of, you know, reasonably bad weather, that we don't drag citizens and staff and so forth, so forth out here. It's not so much getting them here, but, you know, when we go to late at night, 10, 11 o'clock, it's, it's really not, we ought to think carefully about whether it's safe for folks to be out at that hour, so you can always kick the meeting to Monday, the Monday next at the latest. And is there any rule that says that we can't convert a work session to a formal meeting with appropriate notice?
No, you can make the vote at a-
I mean, we'd have to bump the planning commissioner, whoever was in the room, but as long as it's noticed, we can do that, right?
Correct.
Would you err on the side of not having meetings?
I would.
Okay. Karen, Ms. Oliver, what do you think?
I would personally favor erring on the side of holding the meeting, but allowing the chair or the mayor the flexibility to remove an agenda item if a critical participant was not able to attend.
All right, Beth?
Well, here's the thing, this is really not about us. If it's, you know, if it's six inches of snow out there, we think it's important that we, we're all going to be here. It's really about people like Tom, who wants to know whether he should try to show up or not, or if it's a library meeting, I mean, those are, that's why you have the cancellation policy, right? All right.
Just thinking, as far as notice for this goes, so if we set this policy tonight or next week, and then in February it snows, how are people going to know what the cancellation policy is? Is that going to be posted on notices, or posted on the website, or?
Well, I mean, that was the idea originally of having it tied to some third-party thing, where it would be, if Fairfax County courts are closed, we're closed. But it, I don't know if there's a desire to have some extrinsic third-party determine whether they have a meeting or not. And so when we don't do that, then it has to come through the city. meeting or not. And so when we don't do that, then it has to come through the city, either through the website or some kind of public notice.
Is there an ability to put it on the website, to have an emergency notice on the website? 3:00 PM, all evening meetings are canceled in the City of Old Church, and then it could go out to the TV stations and...
Yes. Whenever we cancel meetings, or delay opening, or anything related to weather, we flash it as an alert on the front page of the website, and the new website actually scrolls, so you know it's moving in there, and then do social media and Facebook, Twitter, et cetera. Yep.
So it would go out that way as well, if you're signed up on that notification thing? Okay.
All right, so I think we've got some pretty good guidance here. Do you have anything else, Mary Beth?
So just my thinking, just dealing with the schools and our cancellation policy, a good thing to do is, if we decide this would be the policy, to make sure that goes out publicly now, this week, or in the next few days, put it on the website, send it out to all the boards and commissions, so that they can notify their members, notify the school board as well, just so that people know to be even looking for it if we do have a snowstorm next week or the week after.
Okay. Any idea of, you lean towards canceling meetings or having meetings?
I just think it really depends on the day. If there's something really, really important that has to happen, we should probably have the meeting. But if the weather's bad and it's risky, there's no huge rush.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next item, then, which is, I think, the committee assignments. And this is specifically for COG, right? So COG wants to know what our assignments are, I think, by two days ago or something. But anyway, so...
We should have met two days ago.
That's right.
So you do have two items before you. One is the COG Resolution, TR-15-01, and that one, we actually are requesting council's consideration of taking the vote this evening, speaking of converting a work session to a more regular meeting, so that the city clerk can forward that to COG. The other one is a discussion of appointments as liaisons to all the regional boards and commissions that are listed in the separate staff report labeled "Discussion of Appointments."
Okay, so...
You want to do COG first?
Yeah, let's go and do COG. Let's bang this out pretty quick.
And so there's a slot on the second page to fill in the blanks.
But they're essentially the same as before, correct?
The COG committees are the same, and so do you wish to retain them as they were when you adopted them in 2014?
So does anyone want to get off their COG?
I have, I got to get off COG.
Okay.
I had a really hard time getting to meetings, and I did not represent the city well, sad to say.
Okay, so you're on the Human Services and Public Safety Policy Committee. Okay, is there anyone who would like to pick up that slide?
That's why I got it, right?
Nader's not here. Should we, should we... Dave, I know Dave, you're down there. Would that be too big of a position for you?
Yeah, my current office is what, only four blocks from COG. So if there's anything that anybody wants me to cover, I'd be pleased to do it.
Well, how about we make you the actual person on that? Can we do that?
Yeah, unless, sure.
Do you not, I mean, you'd want to get out of that business.
I would love to do it, but it was just logistically really hard for me to get there, and the communication never really worked with COG.
All right, so we'll go ahead and then have you be the official appointee, if that's okay, for 2015. Is there anyone else who wants to get off a particular assignment or appointment? Okay, seeing none, then I guess we're essentially keeping the last appointees safe for Dave Snyder being appointed in lieu of Mary Beth Conley for 2015 for Human Services. Did you want us to take a vote on that tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay. And so do we have a motion, then, for our 2015 COG appointments?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve TR-15-01.
With, do we need to specify the change?
Do, as similar to 2015, except for the change for the Human Services Public Safety Committee to Mr. Snyder.
Okay.
What she said.
Okay, do we have a second? Madam Clerk, since you're here, do you want to take a roll call vote?
Sure. Here, I'll do it here. I was just going to do it on this.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. That passes.
And what's round two of this? This is on the general committees, all the other liaisons and the like. Is there anyone who wants to change their committee or liaison assignments for this year? Ms. Oliver?
I would like to step down from the School Board-City Council Liaison Group, because I just cannot make those meetings at the time that they insist on scheduling it.
Well, I mean, last time, there was a discussion about changing the time, and people didn't seem disagreeable to that. You know, I don't know who was there, I was there. Do you guys recall that conversation, where I mentioned that? And they didn't seem disagreeable to it. If it were a different time, would you be agreeable to staying on?
If it was in between 6:00 and 7:30 in the evening, yes.
Okay. I mean, I can pursue that, or maybe Cindy, you could do that, in terms of talking and finding out if we could do some morning meetings? Would, if that were the case, would you be okay, then?
Morning?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do morning.
Okay. Any other changes you'd request?
Well, can I just ask if there was anybody else that would want to take that slot? Because I don't want to keep somebody else from it if...
No danger of that.
And it's not because it's not a very important group, it's just, we feel that...
For people on that group.
Feel our ancestors are being well represented.
Wait, the other question is, do we need to have four representatives on the School Board-City Council Liaison Group?
I tell you, I mean, honest, I hear what you're saying. I think it's a valid question, although without the last person here, Nader, I think it'd be good to have him participate, since it's a fairly major overhaul of changing, going from four to maybe two for some of these committees. I think what you're implying is not just that, but probably EDC and other committees as well, aren't you?
Well, no, I tried that already. That failed, remember, six months ago. I'm just wondering, particularly on this one, if Karen doesn't want to do it, do we, does someone else have to do it, or could it just be three?
No, I guess it could be four against three on the, because the school...
Does the school board have three, four?
I think the school just officially has the chair and the vice chair.
Okay. All right, well, then I guess unless there's any objection, why don't we just, do you want to just drop off, then, or do you want to come? Okay. All right.
One less.
All right, so any other changes? Why don't we keep this rolling? Any other changes?
Yes, I just wonder if somebody would be willing to serve as the liaison to the Tree Commission. That is the organization I have had the most difficulty making any of their meetings.
Okay, is there any answer to that question?
I've done that. I've done that time. Thank you very much.
How about Nader? Is Nader, is he available at that time? No, just kidding. All right, was anybody wanting to be the liaison to the Tree Committee or Tree Commission? Mary Beth is indicating yes by nodding.
By nodding, no, I cannot.
Let the record reflect.
I wish I could do that, but I cannot.
Let the record reflect, Your Honor, that the witness is nodding her head yes. All right. Look, I don't know the answer to that one. Phil?
I can't hear you.
All right, then I guess you won't object. Phil is...
Hear that, I think.
All right, like, do you want us to have it vacant? We can have it vacant for a little while. I mean, it'd be nice to have somebody, but if no one's agreeable to doing that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think by default, you're vacant now. They are a strong group that has some good expertise, and they are trying to do some new policies and grants and stuff. So I know it's a workload issue, but in the ideal, it'd be nice to have a council member liaison, even if it's...
When does the Tree Commission meet? Wednesdays?
Every Wednesday?
It just seems that way.
Second or third Wednesday, at the same time as the library.
That's your problem. You can't do both.
All right, Mary Beth, seems like she's...
I can't, I just can't.
Okay.
I cannot do Wednesdays.
Just write her down.
I would like to, though, be added as the alternate on the GMEH Campus Planning Committee?
Yeah, I think we've already, did we already do that?
I, well, I know, but it's not listed here, so I'd like my...
Okay, make note of that.
...listed there. And... I, right, right. And then the Northern Virginia Workforce Investment Board, I just have to say that I contacted them when I first started, and they sort of laughed at me and said, "Well, we don't really do anything." And then I never heard anything from them. So I'm just...
You need something more substantive, like the Tree Commission.
Like the Tree Commission. I'm just wondering if I'm, if I need to be...
Tree, trade that for the tree, all right?
I need to be more aggressively part of it, or they really don't do anything, you know?
Let's trade that for the tree.
They are pretty inactive, but I can have Nancy check in and coordinate with you.
Nancy?
Nancy Vincent would be HHS's key staff that coordinates. They actually have some General Assembly legislation this year and some attempt for money, so it actually could be a more important...
Is that a kill source? Is that? Okay, yeah. So I definitely talked to somebody there and said, "Put me on your list," and then I completely forgot about it until I just read it here and thought, "Oh, I haven't done anything."
All right, let's try to, let's try to wrap this up, because we've got a few more things to do. So let's get someone on the Tree Commission. Mary Beth?
I just can't do Wednesdays, sorry.
If we're opening up to broader discussion, I thought the BDC Budget Finance Committee thing had been worked out, but of course, this still shows our arrangement, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we have to switch, yeah.
It's my understanding that...
That should be the same. The, Phil and Nader are not going to switch, so those assignments should stay the same.
Okay.
Richard would miss me too much.
So Phil and Nader are going to keep their present assignments for the next year?
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Okay.
So, yeah, you can just take out the, in fact, nobody else is identified. Oh, yeah, I guess some people are identified as chairs. Well, you know.
Do we need to pass this one tonight, or can we write Nader down for the Tree Commission and...
This is for the regular meeting.
This is for next Monday.
All right, we'll just try to tee it up, though, from Monday. Why don't you pencil Nader in and just see?
You can ask.
Ask him if he's, if he's okay with that. Yeah.
I thought you were looking at me, man. I was really scared about that.
All right, so let's go ahead and, what?
I have one thing, I'm sorry.
What commission don't you want to be on?
Planning Co- Tree Commission, Planning Coordination Advisory Committee, PCAT. Ms. Oliver was appointed in September for the first time for that, and it's now expired. She needs to be appointed for another year.
All right, so put that down there.
Can I just add that to the question?
Yes.
Sure. All right, so, all right, so let's wrap this discussion up. Why don't we go into this Cox franchise agreement real quick?
Okay, that one can be relatively quick. As you recall, we had extended it to January 31st from last year's expansion because of staff turnover. We're not ready yet to bring it to you for the end of this month, so this action would give us another six months to continue working with Cox. And this is totally not reflected of them. They will be full-time in General Assembly. We have staff turnover. I needed the city attorney to get up to speed on this, and we prioritize working with Dominion. And so in order to get the best benefits for the city, I need some additional time, and Cox has agreed to the extension.
All right, any objection to that? No. All right, so let's go to council comments and schedule. We also have a closed session briefly afterward, so keep that in mind. So any council comments, schedule issues?
I have one thing, really fast. I just want to remind everyone that the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation is having a gala Friday night, as well as the grand opening and ribbon cutting of their new, the new park is Saturday at 1:00 PM.
Okay.
It's going to be a big deal.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, let's go on to closed session, if we can. If you all, I don't know if, I guess, I'm not sure all of you will need to stay or want to stay, so thank you for coming out this evening. Don't let the door hit you on the way out, because we'll need to shut the doors.